That Mr. Taylor will be with us soon. Good evening and welcome. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Board on September 23rd, 2021 pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2021 resolution of the regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February 2021 through January 2022. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 22nd, 2021. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January 25th, 2021 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calender. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to a bit of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, transmitted to Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8th, 2020, and again on January 6th, 2021. Members of the public will have an opportunity at a specific point in the proceedings to comment and ask questions. Be aware, this meeting is being recorded. Those wishing to comment should virtually raise your hand using the Raise Hand button at the center of the bottom of the participant screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing *9. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public, please do your very best to limit your comments to three minutes. An appropriate public comment containing obscenity or hate speech, or that relates to matters that are not before the Board, will be muted. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizoli?
I'm here.
Mr. Cohen? Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. Oakman? Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sacks?
Here.
Mr. Tex Zarni? Mr. Chow?
Here.
Mr. Taylor? And Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a call.
Great. So, next up is announcements. I have a couple myself. First, on October 6th, Sprab is going to have a session with the university where they're going to discuss and get a better understanding of key campus systems like campus-wide stormwater, landscape, trees, energy, et cetera. And so that's happening at Sprab next Wednesday. It's a public meeting, I believe, and members of the various boards, commissions, and committees, chairs especially, have been invited to that so that we're all able to see everything at the same time. Also wanted to remind everyone that, counting tonight, the Planning Board will meet five weeks in a row. We meet next Wednesday, the 29th, Wednesday, to look at Princeton Shopping Center, Eden, Avalon Bay, redevelopment project with affordable housing. And then we have a regularly scheduled meeting on October 7th. Franklin Avenue redevelopment study is on that agenda, as well as Landwin. We have a special meeting on October 14th to hopefully conclude with the shopping center and Avalon application. And then another regular meeting on October 21st, at which we probably will be continuing with the ES and Cs application. So, you know, pull your socks up. We have, we have a lot in front of us now for the next month, so thank you for all the work yet to come. And hours on Zoom.
Madam Chair.
Any other comments? And go ahead, Tim.
I had a question for Carrie. I've received a second set of drawings today related to the Eden Shopping Center. Were they, are they updated, or?
No, I was not aware that you had a full set of them. I'm sorry, Tim, so.
That's okay.
Yeah, I would, I'll grab them back, or so I can forward them to someone else who may need them.
I'll pass them on to Mr. O'Donnell.
I gave them to his.
I already have a set. Thank you.
Well.
I got a duplicate set as well.
I think everyone has a set. I just want to make, Mrs. Wilson, you have a set, right?
I have just one set, yes. Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Make sure the minutes reflect that Mr. Taylor is here.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, any other announcements? Then let us go right into the report from the Master Plan Subcommittee. Everyone received a memo to the board, to the full board, from the Master Plan Subcommittee, recommending to the board a consultant team headed by Clark Caden Hens to lead Princeton and a comprehensive update to the community master plan. In that memo, we invited everybody to reach out before today's meeting, if possible, if there were questions or comments folks wanted to make. I did not get any myself, except a thumbs up from Zenon, who knew he couldn't be here tonight. Michael, did anybody reach out to you and other members of the Subcommittee? Did, did anyone reach out with questions or concerns or anything?
Not in response to the, not in response to the memo that one.
Okay. Well, because this involves a contract negotiation, I'm not looking to start a discussion, obviously. I'm hoping that we can just move right into taking action. So with that, would, would someone like to move that to accept the recommendation and direct the Planning Office to engage the Clark Caden Hens team to start this work?
Julie Capizoli, I'll make a motion to engage with Clark Caden Hens in this master plan process.
And I'll second.
Moved by Julie, seconded by Mia. Let's do a roll call.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
I either have to say I'm recused, or I have to abstain. I had a relation, remember, I had a relationship with one of the applicants. So as far as, as far as this portion of the process, I think I still have to say, you know, I'm not going to vote on this.
Yeah, I think you still should be recused.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, I was unclear about that, or I wouldn't have put you on the spot like that.
But can I come back now?
Yes, after, I believe that's, I believe so, yes, after we take this action. Thanks. Go ahead, Carrie.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor? Mr. Taylor? Are you muted? You're muted, sir, and your camera's off.
Now, now. Here we go.
Yeah. Thank you. And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thanks very much. Really looking forward to starting this work. So, Michael, make it so, and let us know next week how it's going.
I will, and I would just ask the board members to please start jotting down ideas and topics that you want to cover, because we want to really cast the net wide. We really want to be as comprehensive as possible. Just, I don't want to lose any, anything that we should be working on, so start, start thinking about it, because we're going to try to hit the ground running.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the first order of business is to enter into a contract, and then, right away, start working on a work plan. You know, plan the work, work the plan. So it's going to be fun and exciting. Minutes, did we get these minutes, Carrie?
I, I believe I had distributed them to everyone previously. I'm sorry if you don't have them in front of you. They were October 22nd?
Right.
2020. And no one recalls receiving them, then I must not have sent it.
Let's put these on next week's agenda and just make sure that you sent it, because if nobody knows for certain, I don't specifically recall, and I usually look at them as soon as I get them.
I'll be sending out to another set of minutes, so I'll send both out.
Okay, thanks very much.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda, the resolution regarding landmark at Princeton, I understand, has been pulled because one of our staff did not have a chance to review it, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we're moving straight in then to applications. This is from the Trustees of Princeton University, continued from July 8th. Minor site plan with variance for 91 and 110 to 116, Prospect Avenue, Block 50.01, Lot 18. This is file P2121-012PM. And I believe we are picking up with public comment, which we did not finish on, on July 8th. And will complete public comment this, this evening, I feel certain. And, and as part of that public comment, we're going to allow the Save Prospect Coalition 10 minutes or so to make a final presentation of concepts that I understand they've shown to university representatives. But before all of that, I guess I would like to ask Jerry to advise the board how the presentation might or could affect our process. I just sort of want to, want a little bit of information for the board ahead of time about the potential implications of, of the presentation, if the university were to indicate its willingness to make any changes to its plan.
Well, what would happen in that case, it depends upon which of the options the university was amenable to, if they're amenable to any at all. If it's, certainly Option 1, I think they'd have to come in with a new plan and withdraw their present application, because it's, you know, it's very, very different than.
Well, without even talking about specifically what's in it, because people might not even have.
Yeah, okay, right. So they'll make the presentation, we'll get a response from the university. If the university is amenable to doing something, at that time, we'll talk about what the best course of action is, given the present applications we have before us. And, and I, yeah, and then we'll go through more, more detail, nitty gritty of what can be done in those circumstances.
Okay, well, first, I would like to start with folks who had their hand raised for a long, long time at the last meeting and did not get an opportunity to speak. And I know that Carrie has a list, a shortlist. Carrie?
Yes, the first individual that is waiting to speak is Mr. Alan Medvin. And then following him, I did have Carl Pettit and Virginia Kerr. And then that was really it. I didn't know if Ms. Lowendowski is here, and if she would be speaking, she's already spoken, so. And that was it. We're not accepting any other public comments, I believe.
Okay.
Mr. Medvin is our first. Would you like me to move him over?
Though I would.
Yes, and while you're doing that, I'll just point out that we're formally reopening the public comment portion of the meeting. If you do wish to comment tonight, please virtually raise your hand by, you know, taking your icon down to the bottom of your screen and clicking on the Raise Hand icon. And we will hear everyone tonight. You know, general members of the public, for please no more than three minutes. And then the presentation. Mr. Mueller, did you?
I was just going to say that, you know, people who are not on the list, and not, that Carrie just read, and have not spoken yet, and they're entitled to speak.
Yes, yes.
But you would cover that.
No, I mean, I'm glad you pointed that out, yeah.
And Madam Chair, just to clarify, we are going to be listening to comments of new material, of things that we haven't heard, so we're not repeating essentially what we've had over the last two hearings.
Well, no, that's not right. Any member of the public is entitled to speak on the application. If somebody else has said the same thing, that member of the public could basically reiterate that.
Okay, but we're trying to limit it to then a three-minute rebuttal? Or a three-minute presentation?
Yeah, that's what the chair is indicating.
Okay.
Well, three, three minutes for members of the public. I did say that the presentation of the, of what I understand are potential alternative or tweaks to the plan that were, that have been suggested by Save Prospect Coalition, that they'll have 10 minutes or so, because that's an eight-slide presentation, that, so, but, but the three-minute comments will come first.
Okay, and I'm, I'm just, to clarify, this is about 91 prospects, so.
Correct.
What they're going to show, but it has to deal with the site plan on 91 prospects.
Yep. Okay. Mr. Medvin?
I'm here.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to comment.
Mr. Mueller will swear you in.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Alan Medvin, M-E-D-V-I-N.
Okay. Go ahead, you can.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My wife and I live on Longview Drive. My family moved to Princeton in August of 1955. I started third grade a month later at the Nassau Street School. I went through our public schools until graduating from Princeton High School. 11 years later, I got married, and we bought a house on Bertrand Drive. And in 2007, we moved to Longview, and our three kids are all Princeton high grads. Both of my parents actually served on the Borough Council back in the days before consolidation. My dad was on the Planning Board as Borough Council member, and ironically, on June 2nd of 1976, he suffered a fatal heart attack while at a Planning Board meeting. So at the outset, I'd like to say that I have no municipal planning experience whatsoever. But I'd say that my 67-year-old association with the town that I love gives me a Princeton living experience as great or greater than most people here. From the time that we moved here, it was obvious that there were two very special streets in Princeton. One, of course, is Nassau Street, and I include the Palmer Square area in that description. The other was Prospect. Anytime we had friends come to Princeton for the first time, those were the two must-see places on our tour of the town. Nothing defines Princeton the way those two streets define the community in terms of its character and its beauty. Week after week, Town Topics has been filled with letters to the editor, including the addition that I received in them yesterday, that eloquently described why this plan should not be approved, as does the report of the Historical Commission, and I incorporate these things in my comments by reference.
Yeah. As, as to the articles in the, in Town Topics, though, we cannot consider them, because the author is not presenting it to us.
Okay, I mean, that's fine. You know, you may have read them, you may have not read them, the extent you consider it is obviously an individual decision. I've certainly read them. I found, you know, them very persuasive and interesting, and I thank the authors for writing them. But at this point in time, what distresses me more than anything else is the attitude of what I would call our proverbial 800-pound gorilla, Princeton University. A university, I might add, that is not overly generous, at least in my opinion, in terms of its payment in lieu of taxes. Don't get me wrong. I've had some great associations with the university over the years, most recently as the head coach of the Princeton University Mock Trial Team. But in this case, not only is our university an 800-pound gorilla, they're a bully. They don't come to negotiate. They come to threaten. Grant this application, they say, but if you don't, we'll just bring in our bulldozers and tear down the court club. Now, while I understand that the board may not consider the petition, signed by close to 2,000 members of the community, the university could consider it, if it chose to do so, but it doesn't.
Jerry, I object to the reference to petition.
Yeah.
Listening, listening to residents is not on its agenda. They snub their nose at the invitation of Princeton Future, a group founded 21 years ago by residents, including a well-known and well-regarded university president, to engage with the community as a partner, not an adversary. But no, they have no interest in a dialogue, because they're a bully. They're bullying the Planning Board because they can. I suggest that it's time to stand up to the university, and for once, just say no. No, you can't always have what you want. No, your power in this town is not unlimited. No, this proposal might be in your interest, but it's not in the overall interest of the community. In fact, the opposite is true. The plan is contrary to the interests of the community as a whole, a community of which you are a significant part, but not the only part. I saw that, I'm sorry, I only saw his first name, but Michael was using a virtual background of the Fitz Randolph Gate, the main entrance to the university on Nassau Street, in front of Nassau Hall. That gate, until 1970, until the class of 1970 demanded a change. Fitz Randolph Gate remained locked, except at commencement, symbolic of the university's exclusion of the local community. But the 1970 class demanded that the gate remain open as a symbol of the university's openness to the local and worldwide community. But it now appears, unfortunately, that that gate has been shut again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Medvin.
Yes, so the next individual, would you like me to move Mr. Pettit over at this time?
Well, I think Mr. Pettit is going to.
Make the presentation.
Yeah, and if we want to do that last, I would.
Very good. The next person is Virginia Kerr. She is here, so I'm just going to move her over. I hope she's ready to speak.
Okay. So. Welcome, Ms. Kerr. I just would very respectfully ask that you do your very best to observe the three-minute.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, great. So Mr. Mueller will swear you in.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your name and spell your last name.
Okay, my name's Virginia Kerr, K-E-R-R. I live at 124 Jefferson Road in Princeton, which is not in the affected neighborhood, but I do walk there frequently. And I'm also an attorney, although I am not a land use attorney, although since I've lived in Princeton, I've had quite a bit of contact with local land use issues more than I like to even think about, and they never seem to stop. I want to make two points tonight. One isn't really a legal point. It's just about the university's plan itself, judged apart from the legal issues before the board. And on that, I would like to say that I agree with the many, many people who have said they don't see why the reason, they just don't see why the university can't, cannot incorporate the Court Club into its plans for new facilities, for environmental studies, and the School of Engineering and Applied Sciences. And I think others, other speakers have, have covered that. I'll just put a couple of quotes onto my comments. One is my mother's saying, "Waste not, want not." And this plan is wasteful. It's bad for the environment. You know, anytime you start tearing down buildings and moving buildings, doing all of this disruption, throwing things away, that's, that's bad for the environment. I think we know that. The other one is a quote from Jane Jacobs, who wrote a book called The Death and Life of American Cities. And she has a couple of sentences that I think are very apt here. Quote, "Old ideas can sometimes use new buildings. New ideas must use old buildings." Period. Quote, which I think is a useful sentence, or two sentences, to think about in context of what it would mean to repurpose the Court Club and, and incorporate it into the plan for the new environmental studies facility. All right, my second point is on the, on the law. There was a speaker, I believe, last time, who seemed to say it was a no-brainer that the university is entitled to a C2 variance, which I believe is the variance that's being applied for. Am I correct about that?
My understanding is that's.
Yeah, okay, so, so for a C2 variance, the, the university has the burden of showing that the benefits of the deviation outweigh the detriments, and the proposal is better for the community than the zoning requirement, and that they have to also respond to the negative factors, which was that the proposal would not cause substantial detriment to the public good, nor substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zoning plan. Now, the university has made an argument, which, of course, one would expect it to, that its plan satisfies these. But it's also possible to look at it differently, and I think the leading case on this is still Kaufman versus Planning Board for Warren Township, 52042A2, 4571988. Case. You know, and it says, "We think that because of its lesser moment, the C2 variance need not be so closely tied to the general welfare." And, and then there's the discussion. But here, I think, is the important point. By definition, then, said the court, no C2 variance should be granted when merely the purposes of the owner will be advanced. The grant of approval must actually benefit the community in that it represents a better zoning alternative for the property. The focus of a C2 case, then, will be not on the characteristics of the land that in light of current zoning requirements create a hardship, but on the characteristics of the land that present an opportunity for improved zoning and planning that will benefit the community. Now, I would argue that this proposal is not going to, to benefit the community, and that it does not represent a better zoning alternative. And I realize that there's a counterargument, but I would also point out that the Planning Board has discretion here, and that it has wide latitude in the exercise of its delegated discretion. So if this, the, and, and it can be argued, this can be, this is, could be argued either way, as, as is evidenced by the, the attorney who spoke last time, saying, oh, this is a slam dunk for the university. And I will say, that's not true. I mean, there is a very. I mean, there is a very strong argument that they're not entitled to a C-two variance. I wouldn't be so have the kind of hubris to say that it's a slam dunk, but I think there's a very good argument. And in conclusion, I, I, I would say the university has not proved its entitlement to a C-two variance, and I think the weakness of its case is demonstrated by the threat that it has put out there at the beginning to basically, you know, blow everything up if it doesn't get its way. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I'm demonstrably terrible at enforcing the three-minute rule, and I'm sorry about that, but very big deal application and, um, I, I, but I'm begging people who are yet to speak to please, please try to limit your remarks to three minutes. Who's next, Carrie?
Madam Chair, i- if I, if I might, perhaps a, a member of the board could take time and, and make some sort of gesture or notification after two minutes or after two minutes and thirty seconds so that people get a sense of how much time is left on the clock. I'm not volunteering for that, by the way.
I can make an announcement if you would like, but I don't want to be the one to stop the person from speaking.
Thank you, Carrie. I, I I appreciate your saying that. Maybe you could, um, I don't know, put, put up a clap sign or something at the two, two and a half minute on your screen. Anyway.
I'll put my hand up.
Okay.
Okay, the next individual I have, other than Mr. Pettit, because I'm avoiding him for now. It says P. Suozzo.
Hello.
If you could raise your right hand. If you could raise your, yeah, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, so sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Sure, my name's Paul Suozzo, S U O Z Z O. All right, I'm trying to figure out why my mic's so low.
Oh, man.
We can, we can hear you fine.
We can hear you fine, but we can no longer see you.
If you could put your video back on, that'd be great.
Sorry, I'm trying. There we go.
Audio's good.
Yeah, I know, to keep it moving. Um, there it is, sorry. Okay, good.
Yes.
My, I, I, uh, thank you for letting me speak. I, I sat through the first meeting till about eleven-thirty, I guess, when it shut down. I was away and missed the July eighth meeting, but I have really been, um, surprised that, that the misinformation being put forward by the university architect and a couple of times is, there are a number of points, and I think the board should, should definitely say no to this proposal. I'm one of the signers of the petition amongst many others. It was presented that the streetscape matched the existing streetscape on Prospect, so I went home, came home, and if you walk down Prospect from Washington, uh, walk out, uh, all of the eating clubs have a little wall or a shrub lining the street, except for the one building right for this property, and the proposal and the plans is, has no wall or shrub and just goes a whole another route, but was presented as being consistent with the street. That, among some other, uh, issues for the presentation, just had me losing confidence in, in all the information that's being presented, frankly. I, I think the proposal looks wonderful from the, um, the stadium side, uh, and I just feel, I can see them wanting to have an arm of it reach up to Prospect Avenue. Uh, I can, you know, if we were starting from scratch, I'd say, wow, that makes great sense to wrap it around and kind of, uh, you know, holds and connects to the other section, but that's not what's there and, and that's not what's allowed, and, and I understand they can destroy the building. And, and it seems a, an odd choice, but, uh, uh, when they present it as, "We're gonna steamroll and do that if you don't want us to do what we want to do," it seems incredibly arrogant and inconsiderate to the population of the community. I have been here for fifteen years, which is nothing I, I know compared to many of the people talking. The, uh, the other thing I wanted to say was they, they said there was no way because the levels didn't match up on the existing building. If anyone has toured the status center at MIT, that was made with multi-levels to have the different departments integrate and communicate with each other and was considered a resounding success for that, the integration and the, uh, interdepartmental, um, links that it created. Yet here, we're told the different levels make it not possible, and we have to knock the building down. There's no way to use it. So it just seems to me there, there was a, a mindset, and they presented a plan a- and went ahead with that without really considering ramifications. And obviously have, um, spent a lot of money on that, but, uh, that doesn't mean it was, wasn't a mistake and should be reconsidered. Uh, unfortunate as that result is. So I would urge the board to reject this application. Thank you for your time. I hope I've kept it to a more reasonable amount.
Three minutes and five seconds. Thank you. Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person to speak is Kip Cherry.
We've, Kip spoke last time.
Madam Chair, um, as Mr. Dreszky has pointed out, Kip did speak the last time. I, I, I don't know that there's a problem. I don't know if this is, if, if I may. I don't know that it's a problem speaking more than once, as long as it's, you know, not a repeat of, of the testimony that was given the last time.
Yeah, Ms. Cherry, are you, will you, um, you're, you're muted right now. You're, you're on mute.
Kip, you're muted. Kip? You, you're muted.
All right. I have some new things to say, but I wanted to say them after Carl gives, gives his presentation, because I, what I'm saying is most relevant after that. If that's okay.
Okay. I'm having issues with my audio, too. Carrie?
Yes. Um, okay, Justin, if you can move her over to an attendee for now, and then we'll continue. Uh, the next person is Mr. John Radice.
And then after, and then after him.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have Walter Newman, Mimi, JB, and then two more people, and more hands are getting raised right now.
Okay.
And Mr. Radice, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last.
John Radice, R A D I C E. I live on Jefferson Road in town, and I am speaking in support of the application. Um, I think there is a symbiotic relationship between the town and the university here. Each one makes the other stronger. I think that we all, as, uh, you know, citizens here, benefit from a strong university, and if this is the university's view of the best way to move itself forward and to make itself attractive for students and for professors and for other staff and, and people who work there, um, as well as to advance science and knowledge, I think we don't really have much of a right or standing to meddle in that. Just as everybody would be on this call, in short, would be incensed if the university came and told you you couldn't put an addition onto your house, or you couldn't get a curb cut, or whatever the situation might be. I think the university is within its legal bounds to do this. Um, I'm a lawyer. I'm not a land use attorney, so I don't purport to be an expert on it. Um, but I think that if this is the university's judgment, that this is going to make it stronger, that benefits all of us. It, it, you know, I have, I was, I was born in town. I moved away for a time. I, I live back here now. I love it. I'm raising four children here. I know a lot of people have spoken about the length of, uh, service in town, length of time in town. I think consideration should also be given to length of town. People are gonna continue to be in town. And people raising kids, and type of town they would like it to be as well. Different speakers have spoken, um, I think without any justification, about, uh, claiming to speak for the community. They speak for themselves, just as I did. Um, and I don't think the board should take anybody's, uh, uh, words that they speak for the community seriously. Everybody speaks for themselves. Um, but I think this is a, uh, this town is not a museum, or it shouldn't be, at least in my view. Um, it's a living and a growing thing. We should encourage that, and we should support that. Um, because otherwise, it, it will just wither on the vine. Um, you know, without the university, this town becomes like so many nondescript towns uh, out there that you've never heard of. The town and the university can make themselves each other stronger, and for that reason, I, I support this application.
Thank you, Mr. Radice.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I ju- I just thought I muted myself. I'm sorry. Uh, the next individual to speak would be Walter Newman and then JB.
Okay.
Mr. Newman, are you here?
He's been brought over, Carrie.
Okay.
And maybe toward the end of the three-minute, uh, mark, uh, someone can take steps to move JB over as well, so that we don't have these
Delays. Certainly.
It appears that Mr. Newman's is frozen, I believe.
Well, it, it could just be a picture, or I don't think he's outside right now, so.
Okay. Or that it's sunny.
Mr. Newman, unmute yourself, please.
Thank you.
It's actually Ann Waldron Newman.
Oh, hello, Ann.
Hello. And I prefer to wait till after the presentation also.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, the next individual is JB. Okay. I don't see anyone. Just, has he moved over?
Uh, yes.
Sir, we need, need you to put your video on. Thank you.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth? So sworn or affirmed, uh, I think you might be muted. Is your, um, microphone on? Okay, we can't hear you. I, I can't hear Mr., Mr.
Yeah, he froze for a minute on my screen. Uh, I cannot hear either.
No, sir, we can't hear you.
Cannot, cannot hear you.
You may want to join the meeting and make sure your audio is on. I'll put you on the list to speak.
We're sorry. We, we just, we can see your movements and, uh, but we cannot, we still cannot hear you at all, so Ms. Phillip is gonna move you back into attendees, and maybe you can jump off the meeting and then rejoin and make sure that you're joined with your computer audio.
Chair, I, also, there's an alternative where he could call in and use the audio on his phone if he wanted to.
Uh, yes.
Yeah. Okay, sorry about that.
I don't know if he heard me.
Uh, the next individual to speak would be Lisa Seriosol and then Eileen Byrd.
And has Ms. Seriosol been brought over?
I hope so.
Yes.
Yes, she is. If you, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Lisa Seriosol, S for sugar, E R I E Y, double S for sugar, O L.
Okay. It's a very sweet name.
Thank you. My concern, apart from the, the the interest in retaining an older building and its heritage is specific to my responsibilities as chair of the Princeton Pedestrian and Bicycle Advisory Committee. And in the plan that I'm looking at for ninety-one Prospect and the animated paths, I note that Roper Lane has disappeared. This has been an important connection for cyclists and, and pedestrians moving from Ivy Lane and Western Way up to Prospect and, and on into town. And as the town is, I'm sorry, as the, the university is looking to develop further and further into its east campus and late campus, I'm not sure why Roper Lane is getting cut off, ironically, um, by the Environmental Studies Building. Because frankly, there's quite a dog leg that you need to do as a pedestrian or a bicyclist to go straight up through this campus, um, as the plan is drawn now. Um, particularly given that we are all looking at climate change and we are trying to reduce our carbon footprint and transportation accounts for thirty percent of our, uh, CO2 emissions. It would make sense to me to retain the Roper Lane, uh, straight from Ivy and, and on into Prospect.
Ms. Seriosol, I, I'm so sorry to interrupt, um, but it's really important that you speak to the ninety-one Prospect application, and it seems like you're addressing the ES and Cs application, which obviously is joined at the hip, but it is a separate application, and and we just need to hear your thoughts only on the ninety-one Prospect application and, and, uh, the variance they request.
Okay, excuse me, I didn't realize that they were, um, that distinct. But, uh, if there's another meeting that will be specific to that plan of the campus redevelopment, I guess I will, uh, wait for that opportunity then.
Right.
Well, actually, it's the second application on the agenda this evening. We may not, but a- as the chair said, they're joined.
Okay, very well. Thank you.
Okay, the next individual is Eileen Byrd and then James Bash.
So after Ms. Byrd speaks, um, you can bring, uh, uh, JB back in, because he says he believes he's addressed his audio issues.
Okay.
All right, I'm here.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or affirmed. If you could please state your full name and spell your last name.
Joan Eileen Byrd, B I R D.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. So I live at fifty-three Moran Ave, which is, um, a few blocks away from Prospect Ave. So like some of the other speakers, I walk there often. And I sometimes audit classes at the university, so I've had a chance to, you know, walk from the university down Prospect Ave. So again, along, as you've heard before, you know, it's a beautiful avenue. It's a treasure, uh, for the town. And so, um, I And so I am opposed to the variance requested by the university. There are proposals that would allow the majority of the construction that the university wants without having to change Prospect Avenue in that way. And so I, I am opposed and can't understand why the university is so resistant to modifying their, their proposal. Um, let's see that. Well, okay, I know I have to hurry, so I'm trying to hurry. So basically, yeah, that I think the university should partner with the town, that they shouldn't just think that, oh, they can do whatever they want. And they should preserve and protect a historic and beautiful part of Princeton. And also, you know, why tear down or, you know, these old houses? Why can't they be used? You know, why not reuse something that's already there and is beautiful? During the time I've lived here, it seems like Princeton University often does what they want to. Like with moving the dinky, there were many of the citizens who were opposed to that. And the university just did what they want to do. And so I, I just, you know, I hope that the board will kind of stick up for the townspeople and say no to the university. So thank you very much for letting me speak.
Okay, I just, I just moved JB over.
Great, thank you, Ms. Byrd.
And then there's one more person after that to speak, Mr. James Bash.
Okay.
Yeah. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear? If you could raise your right hand. Can you hear me?
Are you speaking to me?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's right. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Sure, Jeffrey Barton, B like basketball, A R T O N.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank you for holding these hearings, both the members of the board and the university, and also for the opportunity to speak this evening. Before I go further, I wonder, can I ask you a question? Am I allowed to post a question either for you or for the university now? Or is this just for making statements?
Post a question.
Okay, thank you. Well, I, as background, I'd like to say I've been, I'm a 10-year-plus Princeton resident. And due to the nature of my work, I walk either down or along Prospect Avenue three to four times a week. And the nature of that avenue is part of the historic nature of Princeton, which I and others, you know, find very special. You know, I generally have an interest in historic buildings and historic preservation and in significant buildings, both overall and in Princeton. I guess I find as, you know, within that context, I find the loss of history and significant buildings and landmarks troubling, especially when there are options available. You know, one is Princeton does have quite a bit of land. A lot of urban universities don't have land and they're constrained about where they can expand. And that's not directly related, but I think that's contextual. You know, I think the Prospect Avenue and the buildings are part of the neighborhood and the buildings around the university and the core of the university, which have remained intact, which are part of why the town and the university are special places, along with many other reasons. I guess I find it troubling too, especially in the context of the loss this summer of the old Princeton Observatory building, which had been torn down this court, in the course of this past summer to make way for sports facilities, you know, in the general area of Jadwin and the athletic facilities. As background, as many I'm sure know, the observatory had previously been moved from a location on campus to the location it was. And it was deemed at that time special and worthy of preservation. It was also something that was used, if not by the university directly, by community astronomy groups. So I find that as a troubling context to the loss potentially of more historic, you know, buildings. So I guess I would like, my question would be, I'd like to ask representatives of the university or anyone else to speak to the Prospect project within this context of the, the loss of the observatory and other buildings like that. And I would be interested to hear what anyone has to say. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Barton. I'll hold off any response that the university has until after we hear all the rest of the public comment, but then give them an opportunity to address that question.
Thank you.
Okay, I just moved over James Bash, our last speaker. Oh, well, until Mr. Pettit, I will go back to Mr. Pettit.
Now, Mr. Bash, I believe you had been previously testified, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so sworn and if, I guess, a process, you, you can speak further, but don't repeat.
No, I have a few minutes of new information. And if possible, I understand there have been some proposals presented to the university. If possible, I'd like to speak after that. Okay?
Well, then, in that case, can you speak after that instead of now? Not twice.
Absolutely.
Correct, okay.
Thank you.
So are we ready then to hear? Thank you, Mr. Bash. Are we ready to hear from, sorry enough now?
Would be Mr. Pettit.
Mr. Pettit, right?
Yes.
Jerry, was this, were these presented or on the, because I haven't seen these. Are they on the website? Is there a link? Have they been marked as an exhibit? And, and I assume they're dealing with 110, 114, and 116, which is the site plan application? Because, you know, first of all, it's really odd.
And Core Club.
You look at, yeah, you look at the application before and it's really odd to just have alternatives thrown out from audiences to be reviewed. It's just not part of the process.
Well, I, I think it can be because we know.
I mean, I'm just putting my objection of record because it just seems like it's very off base. It's not reviewing the application under the current standards. And also that we haven't, it's, it's not presented on the website unless, I haven't seen it, if it was.
I would ask, I would ask Carrie on that.
Well, it hasn't been presented tonight yet to the public, so it'll be on the website after.
No, we did not upload it. I sent it to the board members. It was just received, so we did not upload it today.
So the Mr. Pettit in this can explain the extent to which he or others associated say Prospect Coalition have shared these concepts with the university. My understanding, although I'm certainly not privy that it, that these won't be brand new to the university. But again, let's just commence with, with this. It did, it was sent to, to the Planning Office yesterday afternoon, is my understanding, and distributed to the members of the planning board. And it will be posted on the website after it's presented publicly here. Mr. Pettit, you're on mute.
If you could raise your right hand. Say your right hand or left, okay. Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth? Can you hear me?
We cannot hear you.
Okay, I, I don't know that I can hear you.
Are you connected through your computer audio?
Madam Chair, if I could just take this moment to mention something I wanted to mention earlier, which is that we had gotten into the habit of Carrie announcing how many members are in the audience. And I think that that is a good practice to continue. We've had many requests for that.
It's a great point, thank you.
Yes, I'm very sorry, we have 102 attendees at this time.
Okay.
And plus 45 panelists, so we have a total of 147 folks tuned in. We cannot hear you.
Pettit, sometimes it helps if there's a, there's a speaker icon at the bottom of your, of your screen. If you click on that, sometimes.
Bottom left.
To the right, if you're looking at the screen.
And there's a little arrow you could click on that says select a microphone. You may have to toggle which microphone you're using.
Still cannot hear you. Is there someone else from your coalition who might show these slides? I think Mr. Pettit might be indicating that he's trying to call in.
Madam Chair, Mr. Zink has his hand raised in the attendee queue.
Carrie, could you bring Mr. Zink over, please?
Mr. Pettit, have you tried to toggle the bottom of your screen? Because a, a microphone, an icon of a microphone might come up with a splash fluid.
Do you want me to move Mr. Zink over?
Yes, please. Mr. Zink, you're muted, you're still on mute. There you go.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It would be much preferable for Carl to be able to present this. So I don't know, maybe he could log off or do something else to get back on so that he can do this. The alternative would be that I could present it, but it'd be much more preferable for him to present it.
Chair, what might work is if Mr. Zink did the slides and Mr. Pettit could call in.
Should, what if Mr. Pettit logged out and then logged back in, maybe?
Yeah, it worked for, for Mr. Barton, I, I think. Mr. Pettit, try just disconnecting and then.
It appears he has.
Connecting, okay.
While he's jumping on, is it possible that somebody can email me this document?
Carrie, would you forward this to Mr. DeGresia, please? If, if you're able to do that.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Could you forward?
The document?
Yes, to Mr. DeGresia.
I will work on that, yes.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Sure, Owen.
Okay, Mr. DeGresia, as the applicant's attorney says, that he has not seen this information before. I'd just like to know, has anybody from the university team been presented this information? And Mr. Zink, you may address that.
So Carl Pettit, Sandy Harrison, and I met with Ron McCoy and Kristen Applegate on September 1st. And we presented this information to them at that time. The presentation tonight has one additional slide that is a minor variation of what we presented to them, but they saw the bulk of it. Now, if they chose not to share it with their attorney, that I assume was a decision made on their part. But the university has had this for more than three weeks.
Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to do. I wanted to make sure that somebody from the university could address this. Thank you.
Mr. Pettit had, now, Mr. Pettit, look, there you go. Can you say testing, testing, one, two, three, or something? We'll see if we can hear you.
Phil, no.
Nope. Well, that's.
Mr. Pettit, are you ready? He can't hear you.
Still cannot hear.
Does he have the information to call in?
Well, he needs to be able to.
It's in the, it's on the agenda, along with the computer.
The phone number is on the agenda.
All he has to do is click on it.
I could read out loud.
Can you put the phone number on the chat so he can see it?
Certainly.
Dustin, is there, do you, can you think of a way to?
Yep, I'm pulling it right now.
Thank you.
Unless Carrie has it right in front of her, she could just say it out.
Oh, for the phone number? Yeah, that would be.
And then I believe Mr. Pettit will need to type in the webinar ID that I just put in the chat as well. Mr. Pettit, that number would be 852 7249 5050.
No, the meeting ID is 868-4661-7770. The webinar meeting ID.
Oh, I apologize, I'm looking at the 29th.
I don't know if Mr. Pettit wants to go to the agenda online, but if you just click on it, I mean, if you're using your phone, you can just click the quick dial number. on it, I mean, if you're using your phone, you can just click the quick dial number.
Louis, is there anyone else that is going to speak? We're sort of in delay for, you know...
I know. This is frustrating and unusual, and I understand the point you're making. The other folks who asked to speak wanted to speak after this presentation. And you're right, it's a fair point that the... That seeing the presentation is itself a departure from our typical process. But because of the magnitude of this decision that we're looking at, and because there have been open lines of communication between this coalition and the university, I felt like it was fair to allow this presentation. And let's see, somebody posted in the chat, "I suggest Clifford Zink make the presentation. He's well aware of its nuances." I really think we do need to move ahead and do whatever it takes to move this along. It's not fair to just keep sitting here waiting. So, Mr. Zink, can you deliver this and be as quick and concise as you possibly can?
So I can share my screen?
Yes, well, you should. I believe so.
So can everyone see this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so this is dated today, and this is a slight adjustment, as I mentioned, to the presentation we made to Ron and Kristen on September 1st. As some people know, Sandy Harrison, head of PPF, Carl, PPF board member and a member of the Board of Cap and Gown, and I first raised the question of trying to save Court Clubhouse in place last year. And we raised that in October, almost one year ago, with Ron McCoy. And after many months of seeking a meeting, we met with Ron and Kristen Applegate in March and presented an alternative. They went back and looked at it, came back and said it wouldn't work, and gave us various reasons why. And we've continued to try to have a dialogue with the university, seeking a compromise. And so on the end of August, we requested another meeting with Ron and Kristen to consider the variation on what we presented earlier and what we think would be a very viable alternative. And so it's now been updated slightly. The university has seen most of this with some minor update, but they've seen the basic plan. So the first option that we looked at in this recent iteration, starting in August, was keeping Court Club in place over here and possibly moving the Theorist Pavilion over to the north side of Prospect, keeping 114 and 116 in place. And this would allow the front of the CBE building to be visible and still have the gateway entrance over on this side.
Excuse me, Mr. Mueller, does this need to be marked as an exhibit of something?
Yeah, I was gonna have it marked as '07.
Okay.
And I asked Mr. Zink, you're one of the individuals that prepared this.
Yes.
Okay.
So the university did not express too much interest in this particular proposal. I'll let the university articulate why. But we thought there were many benefits. One, there would be no costs for relocating Court Clubhouse. The dean of research can stay in the Court Clubhouse. The Theorist Pavilion only need minor changes to be on the north side, and it would join the Ondlinger Center and Bowen Hall on the north side, and it can remain as a gateway building on Prospect and to future EQUAD buildings. And Court Club remains in the Astar district. The second option, too, that we presented, is to keep the Theorist Pavilion, excuse me, to keep Court Clubhouse in place. Here is Court Clubhouse, right here. And so we looked at the possibility of adding an addition to the side of Court Clubhouse, which could be a modern kind of building, just like the university has added on to Elm Club, which is now the Carl Field Center. And Anna Beha Architects in Boston designed a very, very lovely addition on the back of that that's very visible on Olden. So it's certainly very possible to add a good building, a good addition on to Court Club, and to design it in some way that's compatible. And then they would still have the gateway entrance over here. So as far as the floor plan goes, this portion right here would be the Court Clubhouse, and this would be the new Theorist Pavilion addition. Basically, the whole building would become the Theorist Pavilion. And Carl did these sketches and did most of the design work considering it. And so what he did here was, this is the first floor, he had Court Clubhouse and the new section over here, all on the same level. And the transition from CBE, you can see there's a change here of about 6 feet, 167 to 173, and that would require about 10 steps. So as you came out of the CBE building, you would go up 10 steps. There would be a wheelchair elevator here, and you would go up and you would be inside this full building. This would allow the very nice grand hall inside Court to be used for conferences or meeting places, whatever. And then on the second floor, from the second floor of the CBE building, you would have the same situation. You would come in, you'd go up about 10 steps, and you would have a wheelchair elevator, and then this entire building would be on one floor. So the total square footage here, now, we took this off, the square footage size of the building off the university's drawings that it submitted, the total, this is called "assignable square footage," which means footage that's actually usable. The total here, we calculated, would be about 7,845 feet. That would be 800 or 900 square feet more than the standalone Theorist Pavilion. So it would actually be able to be a slightly bigger building. And so what are the advantages? No costs for relocating the clubhouse. It stays in the Astar district. The combined building could be called the Theorist Building. It stays as a gateway identity building, combining historic architecture with a very, you know, what should be a very attractive modern addition. And the combined building would have more square footage for teaching areas, et cetera. Programmatic adjacencies, which is something that the university has talked about, would be maintained with the CBE building in the combined building. And it follows the university stewardship in the precedence of Carl Field's, the Friss Center, which has a new addition on the back of it, and the Rabbinowitz Building, which was the old chemistry building on Washington Road, has a very big new addition on the back of it. So, and again, the Great Hall would be used for new purposes. And Prospect Avenue would remain largely intact. Now, one of the items that we discussed in some detail with Ron in our presentation of this, and this is why we've added this new slide, is that he has talked a great deal about how important this gateway pedestrian connector is to get into the rest of the CBE building and the rest of the complex. So in this situation, Court Clubhouse would be picked up and moved about 40 feet to the east, and that would allow a bigger space right here. The current space between the two buildings is 37 or 39 feet, and this would be quite a bit larger than that. So you could get two pedestrian walkways, and it would be a more visible entrance to the campus down below. And it would still have a pavilion added to it. It would be slightly smaller, but because the other version had additional square feet, this might actually be able to, or this might actually come in at the total amount of space that they'd need. And of course, it would leave these three buildings in place and preserve the no-build zone in the buffer over there. So the advantage to this, it would be reduced costs for relocating Court Clubhouse, and it would get a double-wide gateway pathway. Plus, on top of that, the elevation could be lowered. Court Clubhouse sits on a bit of a mound, and it could be lowered slightly to eliminate some of those steps. So maybe you wouldn't need 10 steps, you might be able to have six steps or seven steps. Another benefit is Court Clubhouse stays in the district and may or may, likely will have additional square footage, still have programmatic adjacencies, and still follow the stewardship of historic buildings. And the Great Hall continues to be used in the CBE, and Prospect Avenue remains largely intact. So if the university was amenable to moving the Theorist Pavilion over here, Court Club could still be picked up and moved slightly to the east, and that would provide a wider entrance here for the gateway that the university has expressed as such an important part of its plan. And so, you know, basically, this is really, when Carl did these sketches and, you know, demonstrated that this is really a very feasible possibility, and it has precedent here on campus for combining new buildings and old buildings, you know, this would be beneficial to the public because the three historic buildings would stay in place, Court Club would stay in place, and the university can still have a new building that was compatible with Court Club, not to replicate it, just like the Anna Beha addition does not replicate the former Elm Club, which is now the Carl Field Center. But this appears to us to be a very viable possibility. This little bump out here is a later addition to Court Club, and that could be taken off without compromising any of the historic character of Court Club, and that would provide a slightly wider pathway here. And I'd just like to add one thing. I wasn't intending to speak tonight, but I just wanted to add something. I think everyone here knows that the Historic Preservation Commission has agreed to pass a resolution. They haven't actually voted on the resolution, but they've agreed to Court Clubhouse, to Prospect Avenue, recommending to the planning board and the council to designate it as an historic district. And so it was very interesting to me at that meeting that people were as interested in the cultural history of Prospect Avenue as they were in the architecture. And I went back and I thought more about that, and I did some more research. And as some people know, I mentioned this in the book that I wrote, but I didn't really elaborate on it. These, both of these clubs, this was Key &amp; Seal Club, and this was Court Club, they both went out of business in the '60s, a time, as some of us might remember, of the counterculture, and people were, you know, not being so favored to be involved in institutional activities, et cetera. And the university bought both of those buildings. There was a problem with bicker. In 1958, it is referred to as the Dirty Bicker, and it's called that because a lot of Jewish students were blackmailed or blackballed at that time and weren't allowed to join any of the clubs. The university then took these two buildings, and in 1968, opened them up, and they called them Stevenson Hall. That referred to both buildings. And Stevenson Hall was named after Adley Stevenson, who was one of the great alumnus, alumni of Princeton. And in, I think, 1971, the, there was a Jewish organization meeting off-campus on Wigan Street, and the university moved them to Key &amp; Seal Club. And so this became the first kosher kitchen on campus. And so Stevenson Hall, the combined two buildings, provided an independent social and eating experience for students who didn't want to join a club or maybe didn't get into a club. And so both of these buildings played a very important role in the evolution of Prospect Avenue and its role in the life of the university. And so keeping the streetscape intact and keeping the relationship of these two buildings next to each other will honor that cultural history portion of these two buildings, the role that they played in the evolution of Prospect Avenue. And as I said, the people at the HPC were very, very interested in the cultural history of the street in addition to the architecture. And so preserving Court Clubhouse would support that preservation of the cultural history. If you put Court Clubhouse over here, it's going to separate it from the former Key &amp; Seal and the relationship of the two of them as Stevenson Hall, providing independent eating and social life for students, including the first presence on Prospect Avenue for Jewish students. That would be substantially lost.
Okay.
So I appreciate the opportunity to present this. As I said, this slide and the previous option, one, we presented to Mr. McCoy and to Kristen Applegate on September 1st. This slide...
Thank you.
This other slide is simply a slight variation on it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I've already moved Kip Cherry. I've already moved, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, Carrie.
I moved Kip Cherry over. She was waiting to speak, so I'm going back in order. So she's already moved over.
Thank you very much. Okay, am I ready to go?
Yes, I think I feel sworn.
Do I need to be sworn in?
No, she'd been previously sworn.
Yes. Okay. I'm Kip Cherry, C-H-E-R-Y. I'm a New Jersey professional planner and a certified member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. There are two points I want to make as new testimony. Carl Petted has shown that there are ways to join the Court Clubhouse and the ESSAS Buildings in what could be an award-winning design, and there are many other possibilities. The very architect chosen by the university for the ESSAS Buildings, NEAD Architects, offers new design in an historic context and has completed relevant designs that bring together the historic and the modern, including the Peabody Essex Museum, the Yale University Art Gallery, and the American Museum of American History. There are many additional examples of such projects done by others that I know include the Newark Museum, the Detroit Institute of Arts, Rice University, and the Pretty Men U.S. Courthouse, just to name a few. And I mentioned the Pretty Men U.S. Courthouse because it is right across the street from the Capitol Building in Washington and at one of the most prestigious sites in the United States. And it is a combination of an historic building and a new modernistic addition. Secondly, there is no one, since no one has done so, I want to very quickly summarize the key point that establishes that projects do not qualify for a C2 variance. that projects do not qualify for a C-two variance. And Virginia did cover, not cover, but touch on this, but I have a different point to make. The most important criteria required for variance under the municipal land use law is whether the benefits of the variance outweigh any detriment to the public good. With enormous, with enormous public opposition to granting the requested variance, the university has stated that there are absolutely no alternatives. No matter how hard they have tried, they just cannot find a single alternative that would allow the Court Clubhouse to stay in place, which to me is a surprising position for any place of learning. Instead, the applicant claims its proposal is improving the current conditions and the existing nonconformity of the immediate area. This is in spite of the fact that the Court Clubhouse would lose historical value and validity by no longer being in its original site. And it no longer would be the badly needed E S S E A S buffer to which it is well-suited between Prospect Avenue and Ivy Lane. And demolishing three historic structures also is currently not an improvement. And there is the irreparable loss to the historic character of Prospect Avenue. And finally, the applicant's proposal would impair substantially the clear intent of the master plan to preserve, to preserve Club Row as an historic district. The applicant offers no real substantiation to support its assertions and claims of benefits. And yet a variance is not an entitlement. The M L U L is very clear that a variance must be to the public benefit where the net benefits must substantially outweigh the detriments. In conclusion, I recommend that the board deny the variance requested as, as proposed. Of course, I would alter my views if I knew that we were coming up with a new alternative design. So I'd be very interested in, in something new. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Carrie, who's next?
JB is next, and then Anne Newman. Sir, put your video on and unmute yourself.
Carrie, I believe you already spoke.
Okay.
It's James Bash.
Yes, thank you. Sorry about that.
My, my apologies. Okay, then that would be Anne Newman, who came in under her husband. So let me move her over. And then that's it.
Okay.
Hi. Good evening. Are you, can you hear me? Okay, thank you. It's, I did need to be sworn back in, Mr. Muller?
No.
May I share my screen?
Yes, you do have three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, no, you came in, where's Anne Newman? She was moved over before you were, sir.
Oh, okay, I got.
Oh, no, no, oh, J, that's right, you're JB, okay.
Too many JBs.
Never mind, never mind, go ahead, sir.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Great, thank you. Let's see. Okay, can we see you here? Let's see.
Yes, we can see.
Okay, great. So, so my, my daughter's a high school senior. And we did a little college tour this summer to schools she was interested in. And I thought I would just show a couple of examples of what we saw on virtue. We visited a dozen campuses. And here's just a few of the, the best examples of things that we saw. Ambassador College, they turned an eighteen sixty-six Lombard Romanesque into a nude Center for Drama and Film designed by Caesar Pelli. Beautiful, beautiful building, combination of old and new. Smith College, the Nielsen Library, originally built in nineteen oh nine in Italian Renaissance revival style, was just now completed in March by Maya Lynn. And they have the additions on the sides. And you can see, this is the kind of thing that I think Mr. Zink was pointing to as a possibility for a Court Club to keep it in place and also design something really cool, unique, and interesting. And then the last place that we went obviously was home, right here in Princeton University. And I think this was mentioned as well. This is the Elm Club, built in Italian revival style in nineteen oh one. And a wonderful restoration and expansion in, in two thousand and nine. The fifty-eight Prospect Avenue, virtually right across the street from Court Club and an original eating club, I might say. And the facility is beautiful. The addition is designed in keeping with the style of the original building. It's gorgeous during the day, it's gorgeous during the night. And it's better, it's one plus one equals three. That's what we have here. At the HPC meeting on June seventh, this is a slide that Mr. McCoy presented. I believe Kip Cherry recommended, showed these, talked about these buildings as examples of what their architects can do. To quote Mr. McCoy, he's highlighting the qualifications that they selected for them is their expertise in designing contemporary buildings in historic settings and also their expertise in adaptive reuse. And I think that's exactly what we're talking about here. During the planning board meeting on June seventeenth, the university testified before you that ninety-one Prospect is recognized as a significant historic resource and that they agree with the nineteen ninety-five Prospect Avenue District Report that the three Victorian Queen Anne's are part of the street's visual and institutional history and would have been appropriate additions to the Princeton Historic District. But sorry, they weren't, so let's get rid of them. This was a letter, an excerpt from a letter in Town Topics this past week.
We should disregard this because this is from somebody else who's not testifying.
Okay, but I can.
Justice, justice lawyer.
That's fine, but I can say for sure that Princeton has been ranked, was ranked number one again for the eleventh consecutive year this year by U.S. News. And virtually for every year out of the past thirty years, they've been one or two in the country. So it hardly seems that if, for some reason, two percent of their six hundred and sixty-six thousand square foot project, which I believe all of us do generally support, or at least most of us generally support and believe will be good for the town, if that doesn't happen exactly as they've drawn it out and there is a better solution for everybody, that, you know, if that happens, that, that the school is not going to go down the tubes and the project's not going to go down the tubes. I understand what Mr. Radich testified before, I understand his point of view. But this is a partnership between the town and the university. And the university is asking for a variance, is asking the town to break its rules. So we have to work together to find a better solution. And speaking of which.
Madam Chair, we're already past five minutes. This is the second time he spoke. This is getting to be just, you know.
Well, we're not past five minutes because I set my timer as well. But Mr. Bash, you need to wrap up.
Okay, I've just got three, four more slides. Mr. Eisgubber talking about how we need to work together. We have to help each other. The Director of Planning, the town says that, suggests that the university seriously consider amending its application. The variance is a self-created hardship proposed by the applicant. The HPC unanimous consensus is that both applications by the university be denied by the planning board. And then the testimony of David Kinsey is that to approve it, you must find these five findings. Only one can be found in his opinion. And the university has not provided evidence that is entitlement to the requested variance. And as we've seen previously from everything else talked about tonight, they haven't even demonstrated a need. So all these people who are experts in their fields and what they are saying is, there is a better way. It's well-known that constraint breeds creativity. And that is what we're talking about tonight. You add a little constraint and we get a better result. Thank you very much.
Let's mark this as Exhibit O eight. And Mr. Bash, if you can get a copy of this to the planning board staff?
Absolutely. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Bash. You can stop sharing your screen.
I've already moved over Anne Newman, so I don't know if she's ready to speak.
I've just unmuted myself.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So it's sworn or affirmed. Please state your full name and spell your last name.
Anne Waldron Newman, N-E-U-M-A-N-N. And I'm a longtime former member of the Site Plan Review Advisory Board and the Princeton Environmental Commission. And I too wish to recommend that the planning board deny this application. I agree with previous speakers that it's not to the public benefit and it's not even as Mr. Zink and Mr. Pettit have shown necessary to the university. And I'd like the planning board to consider the university's record of keeping the town's needs in mind with reference, for example, to moving the dinky, destroying an entire neighborhood and moving a center for public transportation further from the center of town. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Newman.
Okay, there are no more individuals wishing to speak.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will close public comment. There was a question posed by one of the members of the public directly to the university. And I confess, I've, I've lost track of where I wrote that down. Do you recall, Mr. DeGrazia?
It was Jeffrey Barton.
Yes, and he just wrote that it was he, so.
He wanted, yes, for you to speak to the loss of historic structures.
I think our slides in our presentation,
In and around campus.
At the beginning where we had, you could go to our exhibit, slide five, six, I don't know, where it went through and had the eighty buildings that we, let me, let me look at these. I'll tell you the exact age. So in Exhibit A one, I would go to slide one, two, three, four, five, six. And it gives a stewardship, a view of some of the projects. The university is very serious about historic preservation. We testified, we've gone through about, you know, eighty preservation projects with building structure streams and the like. So it's something that's taken very seriously. We've gone through and have, you know, a team of consultants, historic preservation consultants on this project as well. In fact, this project is a preservation project. I, I know we just saw slides in, on alternatives that, you know, just don't work. We've evaluated those alternatives. I mean, the first one put the Thieris Pavilion across the street. When, how are the lab space and the Thieris going to interact? That's a fundamental program need. The second one, there was variations. And again, the university looked at this initially and then looked at it again and again. And it doesn't meet the programmatic needs. There are certain requirements that are needed for a university to continue to be number one. That's what this is about, you know, bringing in the state-of-the-art facilities, bringing in the best minds of the world. And you need to meet the spatial and programmatic needs for that. So, you know. And then the third option was shifting it so that we at least met the need of having a connector path. But at the same time, you're moving ninety-one, which was the big objection. And then you're gutting the interior to make it work. And then it won't work because there's not enough space. And it still won't have that connection between the Thieris Pavilion and the lab space. So, and, and the first one included the removal of one of the places. So it just seems like, you know, these alternatives just don't make any sense. We'll go through and, you know, we've heard a lot of the comments. And I think that what we need to do is sort of take a step back and focus on what is being proposed and what are the applicable standards here? Because this, I could tell just from the public comments that people are just reading newspapers or web articles or comment sections and taking them as fact. They're simply not fact. You know, this proposal is in furtherance of the zone plan. The exception is a benefit because it reduces a nonconformity. Just because we're making that situation better doesn't open the door to make this treated like it's in a different zone or if it's an historic zone. That's the same thing as taking a commercial building and then applying residential. I'm getting an echo.
Yes.
So the first thing I'd like to do, Madam Chair, is have our planner go through, set the record straight, address the comments. Then I'll have Ron McCoy go through. He could talk a little about where we are, what we're proposing. And he could also address some of the issues of what, you know, we've heard these suggestions and, you know, other ideas that we may have come, you know, that we could come up with in this particular project. So I see my planner jump on, he's over there. And Hughes, we're going to have to have him sworn in, he's.
All right, just a second, Christopher. Louise, at what point do you want to have the township professionals present their reports?
Um, well, if the university has still got professionals yet to speak. And Mr. DeGrazia, do you have anyone other than Mr. Hughes who has not yet testified?
It'll just be Mr. Hughes and then we'll have Ron McCoy as well speak. Because we, there was a lot of information out there. We have to address the comments and the issues that were raised. And those are the two that will be speaking.
Okay, and Mr. Muller, is it your sense that our professionals should, should go first?
I think that makes more sense. And, and then the university could respond not only to the public comments but to any comments by members of the professional staff that they think it's appropriate to comment on.
Jerry, wouldn't it be good to get our planning testimony cleared on the record for staff?
Oh, sure, sure, okay, yeah, that.
Maybe we do that.
Right, you're, you're right, you're not finished with your.
Let's do the planning testimony. And then if you, if you want to interject the staff and then we can come back.
And then you, and then you do your rebuttal, that, that's a good process.
Okay.
Can I just jump in, Christopher, and suggest that it, I think it might be more beneficial if I could, if I could talk briefly before staff does. I think that hearing our response is important for staff to frame their, their, their opinions of the, of the project.
So you're suggesting, Mr. McCoy, that you have some time after Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Hughes, have you been sworn in?
I have not.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or affirmed. Please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Keenan Hughes, H-U-G-H-E-S.
Keenan, can we please go through your experiencing qualifications?
Sure, I'm a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey and a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I'm a principal of Phillips Price, a planning firm based in Hoboken. I have a master's in science degree in historic preservation from Pratt Institute. I represent municipalities throughout New Jersey as a planning consultant. And I also work with private clients and have been accepted as an expert by land use boards in over one hundred municipalities as well as in Superior Court. And I have previously testified before the Princeton Planning Board.
We'd like to present him as an expert planning.
We accept your qualifications, thanks.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Yep. So, Mr. Keenan, can you tell us a little bit about your familiarity with your, with the project? And, you know, what you've done and what your thoughts are?
Sure, so let me just start by saying what I did to prepare my testimony for this evening. I visited the site and the surrounding area. I did either attend or view the recordings of the prior hearings on this application. I reviewed the municipality's master plan as well as its land use ordinances. I reviewed all of the review letters from the board professionals, basically the entire file for this particular application. And I was retained to provide an evaluation that focuses on the variance that's being requested from the planning board and whether or not it satisfies the criteria under the municipal land use law. So this property, as the board is aware, is located within the E-three zone. And the C-bulk variances that we're requesting is from a very specific E- is from a very specific E3 requirement, which is that no uses other than parks, playground and open parking shall be permitted within two hundred feet of any district not separated from the E3 district by a public street. So in this case, Lot fourteen within Block forty-eight oh one, which contains the Prospect Apartments building, which is also owned by the applicant, is located within the R3 zone. And there's no public street which separates the subject property from that adjacent Prospect Apartments building. So that triggers the variance. However, the existing setback between one sixteen, which is one of the structures on the subject property and the adjacent property is eleven point two feet. Again, the requirement is two hundred and fifty feet. In this application, that setback will be increased to one hundred and five feet. So there's, there's two forms of criteria for a C bulk variance, which I'm sure the board is well aware. There's the, under the C1 standard, where there's a hardship that's derived from the physical features of the property. That's not the case here. We are, in my opinion, justifying this variance under the C2 standard, which is that there are benefits to the public good and purposes of the municipal land use law, which would be advanced. And those benefits substantially outweigh any detriments. And then, of course, we also have to address the negative criteria, which is to show that there's no substantial detriments to the public good or any substantial impairment to the zoning ordinance and master plan of the municipality. So with that framework in mind, as it relates to this setback variance, it's my opinion that, first of all, there's a number of benefits, not just to the applicant, but to the public good, to the community that actually derive from this application. First of all, is the increased setback. Again, increasing that setback from eleven point two feet to one hundred and five feet, I meant to say it's increasing the setback. What's being reduced is the existing nonconforming condition. So that's a significant reduction in that existing nonconformity. And that in and of itself advances the general welfare because this application actually brings the property into greater conformity with the municipality's setback requirements that were specifically developed for the E3 zone. So that's, that's the first aspect. And then secondly would be the increased open space on the property, which would be made available, by the way, to the residents of the adjacent Prospect Apartments. So this would also advance purpose C, which is to provide adequate light air and open space by increasing the amount of open space that is available on this property above and beyond what it currently exists today. The third general issue as it relates to benefits is historic preservation. This application results in the rehabilitation and the preservation of the ninety-one Prospect Building, which otherwise would remain unprotected and at risk of demolition in order to facilitate the ES and Cs development. And this goes beyond just the relocation of that structure, but this application actually contemplates a very significant rehabilitation of that building. New slate roof, repointing, new mechanical systems, et cetera, and the long-term preservation of that structure. And the second aspect under historic preservation is Princeton University's stated support and willingness to petition the State Historic Preservation Office for an expansion of the existing state and national register historic district to include the site of the relocated ninety-one Prospect Avenue building. So these benefits as it relates to historic preservation, advanced purpose J of the municipal land use law, which specifically references promotion of the conservation of historic sites and districts. Fourth is the reduction in the intensity of development of the subject property. This application results in a net reduction in impervious coverage of one thousand seven hundred and sixty-five square feet of coverage that currently exists on this property that would be removed. Likewise, the floor area that exists today would be reduced from nineteen thousand three hundred and thirty-three square feet to eleven thousand two hundred and ninety square feet, which if you look at it from an FAR perspective is going from zero point three four to zero point two zero. So there's an overall reduction in the intensity of use and development of the subject property. There's also improvements in terms of stormwater management and green infrastructure, including rain gardens and an infiltration trench. None of those systems exist on the property today, so that, that is yet another benefit, not just to the property owner or the applicant, but to the neighborhood and the public good overall. In addition, there's improved pedestrian access and circulation, including ADA access, and there will be a net increase in trees on the property. So all of those points also advance purpose A of the municipal land use law, which is advancing the general welfare. And so to the contrary, I think of some of the testimony you heard from neighbors and other objectors, some of which are licensed planners, actually. It's, in my view, inarguable that this approval of a variance here for the setback, which actually reduces an existing nonconforming condition, would advance at least three purposes of the municipal land use law. And so that is a very significant statement in terms of the overall benefits to the public good that would result from the approval of this variance. But we still have to address the negative criteria. And the first aspect of that is that there are no substantial detriments to the public good. And as I've stated, we're mainly talking about improvements to existing conditions on the site in terms of setbacks, the coverage, open space, trees, landscaping and new stormwater management. In addition, the use of this relocated building would be a relatively low intensity university office use that's not going to generate substantial detrimental impacts to any of the neighboring properties. There will not be any significant traffic and parking impacts to the area. And visually and aesthetically, the relocated building will be in keeping with the character of Prospect Avenue. In fact, it's a building that already exists within this streetscape and it is a former eating club building, which, by the way, exists on both sides of Prospect Avenue. So in my opinion, there's no substantial detriments to the surrounding area connected with the approval of this particular variance. And then finally, there's no substantial impairment of the zoning ordinance and master plan. And I want to start by saying that, first of all, the E3 zone, when you look at the detailed requirements in that particular zone district and municipality, there's a number of requirements as it relates to ensuring the protection of surrounding residences and in particular along Murray Place. And it appears a lot of these requirements were put into place back in two thousand and five to really ensure that any additional development within the E quad area and growth in that portion of the campus would be adequately separated and buffered from the single-family residences that exist along Murray Place as well as other areas adjoining that, that particular portion of the campus. So that's really the, the intent and the genesis of the two hundred and fifty foot setback requirement. And again, in this application, the setback that's under review by the planning board is between two university-owned properties. So from a planning perspective, that's a very relevant fact in terms of evaluating whether approving this variance would substantially impair the purpose and intent of the ordinance. And the setback is actually being increased. Again, improving an existing condition, reducing an existing nonconformity. And again, the setback is to a university building, not a neighboring residence. So it's for that reason, I believe, as a professional planner, this board can look favorably upon this variance request and not impair the intent of the zoning ordinance. As it relates to the master plan, I am aware that the master plan makes reference to a potential Club Road District. And I know this has been testified to at length by our historic preservation consultant. But the fact is that this district was never defined or delineated in the master plan. The one-ten, one-fourteen, one-sixteen buildings are not eating club structures. And the approval of this variance would actually ensure the protection of a former eating club, which is ninety-one Prospect. And just to reiterate the testimony from our historic preservation consultant, this Fizdak, of the four buildings, her professional opinion is that ninety-one Prospect has a stronger architectural and historical relationship to Prospect Avenue as it has developed over the last century than the smaller frame buildings at one-ten, one-fourteen, one-sixteen Prospect and a greater degree of architectural integrity. And again, approving this variance ensures the long-term preservation and rehabilitation of that building. But in this sense, the Club Road concept would be advanced by preserving and relocating ninety-one Prospect Avenue because it is a former eating club building. I also did a thorough reading of other relevant documentation as it relates to the municipality's master plan. And it's in my opinion that there are a number of other goals and objectives that would be advanced. And I'll start with the Community Master Plan adopted in nineteen ninety-six. A couple of key goals and objectives relevant to this application would be Roman numeral two, which is to preserve the existing character and mix of commercial, residential and other land uses in the Princeton community. Again, under the general topic of protecting community character, this is an application that advances a setback requirement that was specifically put in place to ensure the protection of surrounding residential areas. That setback is going to be increased if this variance is approved. And Roman numeral four, which is to preserve, protect and enhance natural, cultural and recreational resources, including open space linkages, steep slopes, flood plains, historic and cultural resources and recreational and open space areas. And again, this application ensures the preservation of the ninety-one Prospect structure. Likewise, Roman numeral nine references encouraging historic preservation through land use policies which support the preservation of historic buildings and sites. Obviously would be advanced with the preservation of ninety-one Prospect. And then finally, to preserve and protect the character of established neighborhoods. Again, to the point of increasing that setback, which is intended to protect adjacent residential areas. In addition, the land use element that was adopted in two thousand and nine does contain a pretty detailed section that's devoted to educational institutions. Obviously Princeton University is a major focus of that. That section includes the following objective, which is institutions should be encouraged to protect and preserve the architectural landscape heritage and design qualities of their buildings even when not specifically designated within established historic preservation districts. And ninety-one Prospect in this application, while not locally designated and protected, would be preserved with the granting of this variance. And that land use element also provides specific guidelines for Princeton University. They're on page twenty-nine, one of which is, in general, the university should be encouraged to cite its non-residential development away from Nassau Street and avoid development north of Nassau Street. That's one that's obviously consistent with this application. And then secondly, edges or transition areas between the university and the community are critical. Zoning standards should be applied and/or developed to ensure a smooth transition between the university and the community. So once again, that setback requirement, which is intended to buffer campus properties from the adjacent residential areas, will be increased. So in terms of, finally, just in terms of consistency with the green building and sustainability element, I wanted to first emphasize, again, that ninety-one Prospect, not only will it be rehab, but all of the mechanical systems will be upgraded so that it will be a more energy efficient building. But there's some other specific policy statements in that element that are relevant to this application, and those are to manage stormwater with green practices that reduce flooding and pollution, to avoid, then minimize and mitigate adverse impact on the landscape and environment, to protect and increase the amount of natural open space, to provide environmental, social, recreational, psychological, public health and economic benefits, and to protect, expand and replenish our tree canopy. So again, if approved, this project results in new stormwater management on the site, including green infrastructure in the form of rain gardens. It results in more open space, less coverage and more tree canopy. So clearly, those policies set forth in the green building and sustainability element, in my opinion, would be advanced. So just by way of conclusion, again, this application is actually just to reduce an existing nonconforming condition by increasing the setback to the adjacent residential zone, which contains the Prospect Apartments from eleven point two feet to one hundred and five feet, which is a major improvement of an existing nonconformity. And referring back to the C2 criteria, in my opinion, it's very clear that there are several purposes of the municipal land use law that would be advanced and that the variance would result in a number of benefits to the community above and beyond improving the nonconforming setback. And that those benefits substantially outweigh any detriments. And we've also satisfied the negative criteria. So in my professional opinion, the C2 criteria for the requested variants are satisfied. And with that, Chris, unless you have anything further for me, I think that concludes my direct testimony.
Nope, that's great. Thank you, Keenan. I appreciate that. So, Madam Chair, we do have Ron McCoy. If, if you, if you like, we, we would like to.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, may we question this witness?
Sure.
Yes.
May I go?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. I have a few questions. Good evening, Mr. Hughes.
Good evening.
I, first of all, you've been talking a lot about how the set, you know, the setback that was done to protect, to buffer the residential zone nearby Murray Street. And I just wanted to ask you, in your professional planning opinion, was that change done to affect that if there was ever a new development on the site there by the university, it would be that distance away from the residential buildings on Murray Street, that front of Murray Street? Or was it done to encourage the demolition of the three existing buildings which are nonconforming to that new setback? What was the intent, would you say, of that change in the zone, zoning?
But I, I think the intent is to ensure that any additional development within the E3 zone provides adequate separation and buffering between the university facilities and the adjacent residential areas.
And, but this proposal involves a new building put on that site, you know, a building that isn't on the site now, but still needs a variance. Is that correct?
Correct, but it's a site that contains three existing buildings within that setback. And that by relocating this structure, the setback would be increased.
And, and going back to my original question to you, do you think this change in the setback requirement was to expedite or to, to make happen the demolition or removal of those houses that fall within the new setback requirement?
Again, I don't know if that was the intent of the municipality at that time. My view of the intent was to just simply ensure that any additional university facilities to be developed within the E3 zone provided that adequate separation and buffering.
Okay, but, but, but this proposal still requires a variance, correct?
It, it does technically, despite the fact it's reducing an existing nonconforming condition.
Okay, I have a couple of questions regarding the master plan and the zone plan. As you mentioned that you felt that this proposal, as it is before the board now, is not detrimental to the, to the zone and zoning and to the master plan. I have a few questions about that. This plan involves demolishing three existing residential structures on the north side of Prospect Avenue. And it involves moving a historic structure, the Core Club, across the street to that site that's going to be cleared. Could you explain how certain elements like the housing element of that master plan, which encourages preservation and retention and expansion of housing opportunities in Princeton, the historic preservation ordinance, which promotes the preservation of our, our historic resources in town, and the green building and sustainable development element, which talks about historic preservation, adaptive reuse as tools for, you know, have green development, using buildings that already exist? Could you explain to me how this proposal is not detrimental, detrimental to even just these three elements of the master plan? Because I'm having a hard time understanding that.
Michael, before he answers, I just want to clarify, the one sixteen is not a residential use. It's a computer research lab, so it.
Okay.
It's not.
I, I believe it was originally built as a residential building and could possibly be one of the future.
Yeah, but the tax, yeah, the tax records and current use have it as an office space.
Yeah, so, Mr. Hughes, could you explain how, in effect, this is beneficial and conforming to the master plan? And it seems to be in conflict with a lot of these goals and objectives of the master plan? And it seems to be in conflict with a lot of these goals and objectives of the master plan?
Well, okay, so first of all, the test is whether the grant of this variance would result in a substantial impairment of the master plan. I know in my direct testimony, I addressed the green building element, I addressed the historic preservation element. As it relates to housing, to the extent there are any existing dwellings located here, you know, I would say housing is perhaps just one of many values that I think the board, the applicant, the community needs to consider as part of any development proposal. But I do not see any substantial impairment to the housing element to the extent that any dwelling units would be eliminated as part of this project. To me, the potential benefits in terms of historic preservation and all of the other beneficial aspects of this project substantially outweigh a potential impairment of the master plan. In my direct testimony, I cited a number of goals and objectives in the master plan documentation that are directly advanced through this proposal, including historic preservation, because without the grant of this variance, I think it's very clear on the record, 91 Prospect, which is, in the opinion of our historic preservation consultant, the structure with the highest degree of architectural integrity and significance of the four subject to this application would be preserved, and its future would be secured. And so, for all those reasons, it's my opinion that there's no substantial impairment to the master plan and municipality.
Okay, so just to follow up on that historic preservation point, but that is only, according to the university, according to what the representative of the university has told the board, if the variance is granted, 91 Prospect is preserved after it's moved. If the variance is not granted, we've been told the university is going to demolish it. Is that correct?
Well, let the record speak for itself. I think there have been statements made to that effect, and that's why, as it relates to the focus of the board's review in this application, to the extent that this variance request-
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that.
This variance request include the fact that 91 Prospect will be preserved.
And as far as the green building element of the master plan, which is our latest element of the master plan, we're very proud of it, and we see it really setting the stage for our new master plan update. You mentioned that this is in keeping with it, that it's in the spirit of it. And again, this project involves, in addition to all the other demolitions involved in the project, three buildings demolished on the north side of Prospect and moving the Court Club. That's green building and sustainable development? I just want to know if that's your professional opinion and testimony?
Yes, 91 Prospect will be preserved, and it will become a much more energy-efficient building. There will be additional stormwater management, including green infrastructure. We'll have more open space, more tree canopy, and less coverage on the site. So I think all of those elements certainly advance the municipality's sustainability principles as set forth in the green building and sustainability element.
Okay, thank you. I'm done, Madam Chair.
Okay. Other, are there members of the board who have questions for Mr. Hughes? I just have one. Maybe it's a yes/no question, and folks, including our own historic preservation commission members and experts have are deeply troubled by the prospect of moving the Court Club building across the street, that it lifts it out of its historic context. And yes, puts it across the street, it's still in proximity, but it isn't it isn't in what the state and federal governments consider a historic district if it's moved. And so its integrity or value as an historic structure is diminished at best. And so I guess my question to you is, does that not trouble you? Do you have no opinion about that as a planner or as somebody who has done adaptive reuse type projects and have expertise in that area?
Well, I would say just generally from a planning perspective, preserving that building and keeping it within the Prospect streetscape is important and significant. I think your question gets into sort of a level of detail and expertise that perhaps I should defer to the testimony of Ms. Bizdak, because she truly is the expert in terms of evaluating the criteria and significance and dealing with the complexities of relocating buildings. And I know she gave a lengthy, direct presentation, answered some questions in that regard. So I really need to sort of defer and in many ways rely upon her testimony as it relates to that issue.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can I follow up on that real quickly, because Mr. Hughes brought up Ms. Bizdak's testimony? I assume, Mr. Hughes, you heard her testimony?
Yes.
When I asked her a question, you may recall, I asked her that it was after she had mentioned that the university would be supportive of having the relocated Court Club be put on the state national register, or at least pursue that. And I asked the question, how would the state office, you know, the SHPO office in Trenton, our state historic preservation office, who would be reviewing that, feel about a site being cleared of three old buildings to make space for moving another one? And if you recall, her answer was something to the effect of, that's a, well, she complimented me. She said it was a very good question. But she also said she had no idea. Do you have any thoughts on that? Have you and her talked about that? Do we have any idea that the state would even consider this still be, you know, that building after it's moved across the street and room was made for it by demolishing three old buildings that exist? That that wouldn't be a problem? Do you have any thoughts on that?
You know, I guess I look at this from maybe more of a practical standpoint, which is that this is a structure that an opinion of our consultant is the most significant of the four that are, you know, subject of this application. If it's not relocated, it's at risk, it's poised for demolition to facilitate the ES and Cs building. So, to the extent that building can be preserved, albeit in a new location, regardless of whether it's in a national registered district in the future, that building is going to be preserved for the long term. It's going to be rehabilitated in accordance with historic preservation standards. So I think, I think to the community's interest, it's still satisfying, you know, the historic preservation value, let's say, as it relates to that building.
And the university has made a commitment to, you know, support the enlargement to include that structure in its new location.
Mr. De Grazia, has the university also considered local designation of the Court Club and the proposed historic district on Prospect Avenue?
I don't think we've evaluated that, no.
Thank you.
Mr. Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's more of a question for Mr. De Grazia as to, I'm just wondering about the process here. It seems to me that this is the first time we've heard from a planner, and this is our third hearing, and the planner's testimony was presented after public comment. That's kind of an unusual procedure for an application, and I wonder if, I wonder why that is, and I know that Mr. Hughes attended the other parts of the hearing, along with the university's army of consultants and specialists, but I'm just curious why this testimony was not made available to the board along with your other expert testimony?
I could certainly answer that. So, when we took a look at this application and we presented it, we thought that there would be an understanding of what the standards are and how they would apply. And it became apparent, based on the public comments and the, you know, questions raised, that we needed to get more specific so that the board would understand the actual frame. I mean, this is as simple as a variance gets. You have a condition, and you're improving the condition, justifies it. It doesn't get any more simpler than that, and it's not even like a few inches. We're taking a buffer requirement that requires a separation of uses, and it's only 11 feet, and we're not doubling it or tripling it, but it's literally nine times more. It is clearly something that is justified under the zone-
Christopher, this is about the fifth time you've given your summary, so I-
No, but he asked the question, so-
In fairness, I did ask a question of Mr. De Grazia about the process that of why a planner was not testifying to a planning board with the other expert testimony, which seems to be a pretty standard way of doing things.
And he was available last time, but we didn't get to speak, so that was all public comment. So, he was not available, I mean, he wasn't there at the first meeting, but we, and also, I would like to mention that our expectation at the time was that ES and Cs would go first. And at the first meeting, a little bit before, we found out that the board wanted to switch the order and do 91 first. So, ES and Cs is a fully conforming plan. There's going to be no planning testimony, right? So, it was a little bit of, you know, the application order getting switched around, and then it becoming necessary based on the question and comments that we were seeing to kind of clarify what the standards are and how they apply.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just to follow up on Mr. Quinn's question, because I'm a little troubled by it as well, being the planner in this municipality. I would have liked to have heard from the planner during the course of the entire presentation. And my question is, first of all, Mr. De Grazia, did you just say that you weren't, he wasn't allowed to speak or wasn't given time to speak?
No, I just said he was present at the last hearing. It's just that the entire time was made up of public comment, so he never had the opportunity to present his testimony.
Well, to be fair, I think you did not offer him as a as a witness or a professional on your behalf before now. I mean, I think the question is a very valid one. I mean,
I think that when an application is pending, an applicant can bring as many witnesses as they want, and particularly when questions are raised, and we just needed to clarify and state our position a little clearer.
Yeah, and I would just state for the record, my professional bias, that if I'm at a planning board, listening to a planning application, I would like to hear from the applicant's planner. Municipality-
Yeah, Michael, your sound is going in and out a little bit, Michael.
I just think, I'm a little troubled that we did hear the planner this late in the presentation and after public comment. And my question to you is, does the public get to question this witness?
And my answer is absolutely. They have any questions specifically to the planner, they should have the ability to do so.
Sure.
Just to add to the unusual nature of this, usually at this point, it would be rebuttal testimony. This was a rebuttal testimony. This was part of the case in chief.
Yes.
So I think the process raises questions.
Yeah. Well, I think it's a little of both, Jerry. I think that it's, you know, there are tons of applications before this board, and I've brought them, where the engineer presents little variances, particularly setback variances, where there's an improved condition, and it's really simple. And it didn't become apparent to us that we needed to get a little bit more specific. So, there's not always planners for every time you have a testimony. I could tell you after the first night, and we knew that we needed to have some more specific information, and we provided it. That's simple.
Madam Chair, could I suggest that we take our break at this point, given that it's 9:30 prior to hearing Mr. McCoy?
Yes, I think that is, I think that's a good idea. So, my computer says it's 9:25. Let's be, you know, back in our chairs and ready to resume at 9:32. We'll give ourselves seven minutes, okay?
Madam Chair, will there be time for the public to question the planner that just testified?
Yes, yes. Mr. Muller and Mr. De Grazia confirmed that that's appropriate.
Will that be after Mr. McCoy goes?
We'll touch base about it as soon as we get back, and I think it probably makes sense for it to be before Mr. McCoy goes, but-
I agree, I agree.
That was my concern.
When it's still fresh.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, 9:32. See you back here. Let's reconvene. Thank you, Carrie. Are we all back? I'm seeing. Yep, that's everybody.
Mia's not on yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. So, as we said right before the break, members of the public who have questions specifically for Mr. Hughes, the university's planner?
Madam Chair, I was wondering, so we're not going back and forth and back and forth, if we could move to Ron. So, and, you know, I had the question before, but really, our planner and Ron McCoy here are to address the comments that were made. It's essentially the rebuttal testimony. So, at the first hearing, we had David Kinsley do a half-hour planning testimony. And then there was another, I think Christine Lewandowski, again, addressed planning testimony. So we had to bring in our planner to address that testimony. There is a lot of other comments that were brought, and a lot of other questions. As part of our application to address these, we have a right to rebut them and go through, and Ron is also part of that. So I'm wondering if it makes sense and help to streamline to us, for us to go through that. We presented the first, now we have our second, and then opened it up, and this way the public will have an opportunity to ask any questions related to our rebuttal.
There are currently 96 members of the public in attendance, 44 panelists. I don't have any hands raised.
Okay.
Carrie, I think a hand just went up.
A hand just went up, yes.
Yeah, and I think we need to make clear, are we allowing the public to ask questions of this witness or not?
Yeah, right.
Well, Mr. De Grazia is not suggesting that there should be no questions. He's, I believe, he's saying that Mr. McCoy should go first, and then questions should be posed to either or both of them. He's representing that this is rebuttal testimony, although it's odd. I mean, it's just so unusual to have, you know, a really thorough planning-
Right, Madam Chair.
Not as rebuttal.
I feel I have to defend my profession here. I would like people to be able to ask the planner questions about planning.
Yeah, I agree with Michael. I think the better practice usually is after somebody testifies, the public should be allowed to ask questions at that point, because if you wait to the very end, it all gets lost, particularly something like this where it's a multiple-day hearing.
I defer to both of you. So, members of the public who have questions for Mr. Hughes, the university's planning expert, please raise your hand, and Ms. Phillip will bring you in one by one. And again, we respectfully ask that, well, I'm sorry, this is not the same as public comment. This is questioning, so I guess we, no strict three-minute rule, but we're asking to please be concise and pose questions as opposed to deliver testimony. Go ahead, Carrie, sorry.
I already put in Professor Martin and accidentally Mr. Zinc. This kept happening, so.
Okay.
And then we have the third person, Ms. Kerr. Okay.
Hi, I'm Eva Martin. I have, I don't think you need to swear me in right now.
You've already been sworn, yeah.
Yeah, so, for Mr. Hughes, I have a number of questions. I'm wondering why, I understand that the plan is to restore 91 Prospect when it's been moved, or when you are planning on moving it, and I'm wondering why it's necessary to move a structure before you improve it? I'm also wondering why does the improvement of the land and the ecological- benefits to that that area? Why does that necessitate a move and a destruction? What why couldn't we improve the the land that's there right now? Also, there was some talk about the reduction in the surface area of that is is going to be taken up in in there's going to be less surface area taken on that lot. But it's kind of ironic, because it's this is not a lot that is just in isolation from everything else. It's, of course, within an ecosystem. And when you are then increasing the surface area and the impervious surfaces on their adjacent lots, that doesn't that to me, it just it seems like it's 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 just it just raises a lot of questions for me as making sense. It that doesn't that it makes sense just for that one specific lot, but not as part as the lot as part of a community. And I know that there's been a lot of talk about the community and the neighborhood and how this is a benefit to the community and the neighborhood as a whole. And finally, I'm I I just don't understand why you think that this is you you keep coming, there there's a coming back to, well, there is we're we are improving the conditions. However, when this when this zoning law was put into place, my understanding is that the three houses were grandfathered into the zone, meaning that it was understood that these houses were supposed to be there. They were not considered to be detrimental to that zone from the outset. And this was really about when when this zone, the one this zoning was put into place, this was really about protecting that area from the infringement, the impingement of the university. And so I do not understand, Mr. Hughes, I'd like if you could please address those four questions. Thank you.
Okay, there was a lot there. I'll do my best.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to start with your point about improving conditions and the idea that these were grandfathered into the zoning. From a planning perspective, there's this general principle that, yes, nonconforming uses and nonconforming conditions may be grandfathered and protected. However, there should always be given an opportunity, a push or direction to bring those conditions into conformity with the zoning ordinance. And as it relates to the setback, that's exactly what will be occurring as part of this application, the setback going from 11 feet to over 105 feet. So that's that's one important aspect. In terms of why restoring after moving, that's probably more of a question for the applicant or the university. I mean, that that's clearly not the application before the board. The application before the board is to to relocate this building, in part because it's at risk of demolition in its current location. So in that sense, it's just simply logical that if it's relocated, you would, you know, then rehab and restore it in its new location. In terms of the ecological benefits and impervious coverage aspects of the application, I think that's there's no question that there's improvements in terms of production and coverage on the site and improved stormwater management. To the extent your question was, I guess it was a little unclear, but perhaps referencing, you know, other projects that are not part of this particular application. The board's purview is really focused on the variance request in this specific 91 Prospect application. And in that regard, there's clearly improvements as it relates to impervious coverage and everything else. I have not been engaged to evaluate any other application on behalf of the university, so I can't opine. And it's not part of this application in terms of benefits along those lines, anything outside of the scope of of this application. I think that's, did I miss anything?
So what, if I understand correctly, you're taking you're taking this completely out of your 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 only thinking of this, the ecology of this area without respect to what's going to happen right across the street? You're only thinking about this particular lot of land?
I'm evaluating the variance request here, which is for to actually increase the setback and what benefits result as in connection with approval of that variance. And obviously, it results, as I've stated, a number of benefits that occur on this property, but then benefit the surrounding area.
And 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 so could you just elaborate again on why it's necessary to make the move in order to do any improvement to that land? Is it absolutely necessary? I mean, why couldn't we put in some nice grasses? Or why couldn't we address some of the the stormwater issues now? I understand you couldn't do all of them, but why why couldn't the university, if it was concerned with that, do that now? Why does it have to move a building to do it and destroy three others?
This this is not planning testimony. It's pretty clear that the application is to preserve 91 Prospect. And the reason why we're proposing it here.
But I objected this, Christopher. You you have a member of the public who's asking a question, and she's asking, and let let the witness answer.
I like the witness answer, but it seems.
Well, the simple answer is that that's not the application before the board. Of course, there may be other ways to improve certain conditions on these properties, but that's not the proposal that's before the board at this time. So what the board needs to evaluate, and what I evaluated, was does this application satisfy the C2 criteria in connection with the requested setback variance? Based on this specific application, it's not based on hypotheticals as it relates to whether there may be some other alternative ways to improve the property.
Professor Martin asked the question of, are you thinking only of the area north of Prospect? And it seemed obvious from your testimony that that was your complete focus. There was no focus at all on the the existing 91 Prospect site and what the consequences would be of a demolition or just leaving it in leaving it where it is. I mean, is that correct? You your focus is solely on the area north of Prospect?
Well, I I don't know if I would go that far. Obviously, the application is for the 91 or excuse me, the 110 to 116 Prospect property. But in terms of evaluating how it would, for example, impact the streetscape or, you know, the the character of the surrounding area, I certainly took into consideration the surrounding context. But other lands, other properties are not part of this application, so that was that was not my focus.
Though the relocation of 91 Prospect obviously is part of the application.
Absolutely. But not not the property from which it is being relocated. The subject of the application is the site of its relocation.
Well, I think that's a very narrow reading of the application. I think you have to consider 91 Prospect at its site as well and what the consequences would be of relocating it. But that that's a decision by the board that and and Michael might want to comment on that when he he gives his testimony.
Well, I I, you know, this is perhaps more of a legal question, but I will just say for the record, from a planning perspective, this is a site plan application for a specific piece of property that contemplates the sighting of a building that happens to be relocated from across the street. And to my knowledge, it doesn't involve that other property that so I but I I would defer to Mr. De Gresia on that point.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Professor Martin.
So Mr. Mr. Zinc had been moved over already.
Okay.
And then I have four people with their hands up, Virginia Kerr, James Bash, Kip Cherry, and Carl Pettit.
Okay. Mr. Zinc, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Mr. Hughes, did I hear you say that the three historic houses that that none of them were eating clubs? Did I hear you say that?
They're not recognized as, to my understanding, not been documented or recognized as formal eating clubs that existed in recent history. That's my understanding. But I would defer to Ms. Bizdak, who's the historic preservation expert.
Okay, so as has been stated here in prior testimony, 110 Prospect Avenue started, the back of the building started as a single family house on the location of Cloister Inn, oh, excuse me, Key and Seal, which is 83 Prospect Avenue. Key and Seal occupied the building, which is now the back of 110, as an eating club. And then around, I think it was 1911 or so, they added the front of the building. And they occupied that building at 83 Prospect Avenue as an eating club. When they wanted to build the current Key and Seal clubhouse at 83, they sold the building and a builder moved it across the street and refurbished it. And then another eating club named Arbor Club rented that club, that clubhouse, and occupied it from, I guess, 1923 to or 201923 to about 1928.
But Mr. Zinc, did you have a question of Mr. Hughes in this regard?
My my question was, you know, whether he was aware of the fact that that was an eating club, and he said he thought it was not. So I'm correcting the record. And saying that, as has been testified before, that this was indeed an eating club, and it's part of the cultural history of Prospect Avenue.
I see.
Secondly, you seem to imply that the only way to save Prospect, save 91 Prospect was to move it across the street. Do you think that there's a possibility that the building could have an addition put on the side and have enough square footage for the university to get? You know, in other words, do you think it's feasible that regardless of whether the applicant wants to do it? I'm I'm directing my comments about you saying that the only way to preserve it is to move it, regardless of whether the applicant has threatened to demolish the building? Do you think it's feasible that the building could have an addition on the vacant lot on the side and and stay where it is?
The issues as it relates to feasibility are outside my area of expertise. I would defer to the architects and other design professionals on the team. I'm dealing really with just the practical realities of this application, which is that if the building is not relocated, it's at risk of demolition.
Have you been it's at risk of demolition? Well, anyway, have you been inside 91 Prospect?
No.
Okay, so do you know when it was last renovated?
No, that's not relevant to the the scope of my evaluation.
Well, it seems to be relevant, because you implied that the building needed, you know, that you said that one of the benefits would be renovating the building. And could the building have more energy efficiency? Probably. But you seem to apply that moving it and and therefore renovating it is going to be one of the benefits. But you're not aware of when the last time the building was renovated? Do you know when the last time the building was occupied?
No, again, not relevant to my testimony.
Well, I think it's relevant, again, to the fact that you seem to imply that the building is in need of renovation, and the only way to save it is to move it across the street and renovate it, but let's move on.
No, I'd like to, I I need to respond to that, which is the the scope of the testimony that was provided by the design professionals included the fact that if this building is relocated, it will be subject to a significant rehabilitation, which includes upgrading mechanical systems, new slate roof, repointing, and other efforts. So that's that's a fact, that if the building is relocated, it will undergo that rehabilitation.
And couldn't all that be done in place where the building is now?
Possibly, but that's not the proposal before the board.
Okay. Now, this 250 foot buffer zone, I'm I'm not a planner, but am I correct that this is a no build zone? That the buffer zone is the way it's written, that no new construction is allowed in the buffer zone? Is that correct?
Well, I'll just read the requirement. No uses other than parks, playground, and open parking shall be permitted within 250 feet of any district not separated from the E3 district by a public street.
So in in because it is a buffer zone and only playgrounds and parking, does that mean that the that the app, the applicant or any owner of this property would have a right to put a building up on it in the current buffer zone?
Well, any application would be subject to planning board review. And certainly, if that application, I'm going to answer your question. If that application, similar to this one, resulted in an improvement in in existing nonconforming condition, in all likelihood, again, we're dealing in a hypothetical, but that application would satisfy the criteria for variance from that particular requirement. But again, that would be subject fact sensitive analysis by the planning board to make those findings.
So you didn't answer my question, which is, does the owner of this property have a right? As you know, as a right, do they have the ability to put up a building on this property right now in the buffer zone?
No, I answered your question by saying that would be subject to planning board review, because it would require variance.
It's not just planning board review, it would be subject to the obtaining of a variance. Isn't that correct?
That's exactly what I just said.
Well, you said review, but the planning board can review something without necessarily having a variance. Isn't that correct?
Of course.
Okay, thank you. And you cited as one of the potential benefits that the university would pursue the expansion of the National Registered District to include the relocated Court Clubhouse on the north. So you said you had preservation background, so I assume that you're familiar with the National Park Service guidelines on moving historic buildings?
Yes, generally familiar.
And and you're familiar that the National Parks guidelines say that a building must the building must not be moved to a site where other historic buildings are destroyed to make room for it?
We're getting a little outside the area of my expertise. We have a historic preservation consultant who's an expert on these matters, who's already testified, so.
Okay, I'm just addressing that you testified that the applicant is going to that one of the benefits that you testified was that the applicant was going to seek through the the State Historic Preservation Office to get the district expanded. But it's contrary to National Park Service policy, which is what the state of you, State of New Jersey Historic Preservation Office follows to, number one.
I object.
Move an historic building, and secondly, to move it to a spot that's going to be demolished. Historic buildings are going to be demolished.
You can't take standards that are relevant to this project and say that they are. Those standards do not apply.
But 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 Mr. De Gresia, the the Mr. Hughes brought up as a benefit the fact that the applicant would apply to expand the National Registered District. And so I think the fact that the National Register policy says that buildings must not be moved to other sites where historic buildings have to be demolished. I think that's relevant.
Applicable. The question is, and and we made it clear, that the university is willing to advance that effort. It's not whether a policy that doesn't apply. It's not whether a policy that doesn't apply is relevant. You're asking to be reviewed under a policy that's not applicable here.
But it was stated as a benefit to the public that the university would, a benefit of this application, that the university would apply to have the district expanded. So I think it's fair to raise the questions about the standards of expanding the district.
That's our statement. We think it's a benefit.
That's, that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zink. Who's next? Carrie?
Virginia Kerr, and then James Bash.
Welcome back, Ms. Kerr.
Thank you.
You have specific questions for Mr. Hughes?
Yeah, I have a few. I, I'm going to circle back to a question that's been raised. Mr. Bash, have you reviewed the history of the three houses on Prospect and the apartment building that are involved?
You, you, you mean Mr. Hughes?
Mr.
Hughes.
Hughes. I, I apologize, Mr. Hughes. It's late for me.
Your question, your question was whether I reviewed.
Have you reviewed the history of those buildings? On Prospect, the, the three, the three Victorians and the apartment building? You know, when they were built?
I've reviewed some material. Again, we have a historic preservation consultant on our team, so we're relying upon her expertise.
Right, I, I'm really.
Our significance and related.
Actually, excuse me, I don't want to interrupt it. I am mindful of the time. I'm not talking about the historic significance, I'm just talking about the setback, which is what you focused on. The 11-foot as opposed to the, the current requirement. And I just, I, I wanted to ask if you had looked at, if you know when those buildings were built and when the apartment building was built?
No.
Well, I, I believe, and I'm not able to find my notes, but I think they were built in the 1930s or 40s. And probably Mr. Zink knows. And at that time, the 11-foot setback was consistent with streetscapes at that time. Would you agree with that?
I don't know.
But you, but you do acknowledge that the 11-foot setback is, you know, reflects a setback that was allowable under Princeton zoning up to the point when 17A 354.7D was enacted.
No, I don't know that was certainly.
So you don't think this, there was a grandfather of the 11-foot setback?
Oh, of course, the, the existing setback was grandfathered when the zoning was changed, certainly to create this 250-foot setback requirement.
Right, when the zoning was changed to 250 feet, it affected a row of, you know, buildings that were much closer together and that reflected the, the prevailing streetscape at the time. Is, do, do you agree with that?
I'm not sure I'm following your question.
I, I'm, it's just another way of saying you agree that this was a grandfathered 11-foot setback.
Yes, it's an existing non-conforming condition that was grandfounded.
Right, right. Well, non-conforming condition and grandfather are kind of interesting concepts, but I'm going to return to a question that was asked of you before because the, the ordinance that we're dealing here with here is 17A 354.7D. Is that correct?
I'll take your word for it. I don't have it exactly.
All right.
If you read it, I'll recognize it.
Yeah, well, that's the one that calls for the 250-foot setback, I think. I am, I mean, I don't want to mistake this. I just have it on a page on my computer. Your, your argument is, your argument is that it will be a zoning benefit to get rid of these houses, move this other house across the street so that you get a larger than 11-foot setback, but less, but you need a variance because you can't quite get it to 250 feet. Is that correct?
I don't know if that's a, a fair nutshell of my testimony. What I would say is, the municipality has, has put in place a requirement, which is 250-foot buffer between the residential areas and the E3 zone. So basically, the university in this area. And this project brings this portion of these properties into greater conformity with that requirement. I mean, it's as simple as that.
Right, and, and, and I think at that point, it's, it's important to kind of return to the question that I believe Princeton's planner asked, which had to do with the intent of the ordinance that required the 250-foot buffer. And the question being whether that ordinance was designed to protect, let's say, properties on, I think it's Murray Place, from future development, or whether, whether our council contemplated having that ordinance interpreted to essentially enable the demolition of houses with a longstanding, and I think everybody can believe, a longstanding streetscape in order to facilitate the relocation of another property that contributed to a historic site across the street. I mean, there's an issue about what the intent. In order to understand whether this, this proposal conforms with the requirements for a C2 variance, you have to understand what, what the requirement is that we're dealing with and what its purpose was.
Well, I can say this, I know what the requirement is. I've already stated on the record what I think the intent and purpose is. I would say further that this is a very, very detailed section of the zoning ordinance that makes reference to very specific properties. It was clearly heavily negotiated between the municipality, the university, the neighbors to protect certain properties, save others. If there was an intent to specifically save these three structures, I believe it probably would have been somewhere cited within that ordinance. Likewise, if, if somehow these, these buildings were not intended to be part of that setback requirement, really not, you know, intended to be a part of the buffer area, then why is the municipality requiring a variance as part of this application? I mean, so I, I think that's how I look at it from a planning perspective. The municipality is requiring this variance. I have to assume it's, it's, it's applying this specific requirement, which is intended to protect residential areas from, from the university facilities. So in that regard, this application clearly meets that intent. If there was another intent that went to saving those particular structures, I believe that would have been stated very clearly in this ordinance because there's a number of other very, very specific requirements related to specific properties and buildings that surround this area.
Right, I mean, and, I mean, fair enough, except that when this was enacted, I, I now I believe all of these ordinance are enacted against the background of what we all understand as the whole grandfather principle. So I would assume that and I think we're both, we're both, I mean, this is what intent is. We, we have to come up with a common sense interpretation that makes sense in terms of what we understand a legislative body is trying to do. But I would assume that while you're right, there's nothing in there that preserves these buildings, it's not obvious that this was intended to facilitate the demolition of these buildings either. I mean, it's, it's kind of a wash on that.
Ms. Kerr, I think Mr. Hughes has, has addressed your question to the extent that.
Yes, he has, he has. And I'm going to sign off. Thank you. All right, I could, you know, I know there are other people who want to speak. Okay?
Thank you. Your, your point is taken.
Thank you. Good evening.
James Bash has been moved over, and we have one remaining member of the public.
Okay.
Hello again. Mr. Hughes, I believe you've testified that you believe the benefit to the public outweighs the detriment to the public by granting this variance. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do you think you've looked at this issue from a holistic perspective?
Yes.
You do? Okay. Ha, ha, have you been to Princeton before you came to do your inspection down in this area? Maybe you spent time down here?
Yes.
You have? Okay, good. So do you have an appreciation for why there are so many people? I mean, I think this planning board has heard, I've lost count, dozens of experts and resident citizens who are unhappy with this variance request. And only, I think, two have spoken in support of it. Do you have any sense as to why that might be? Why these people, why all of us might be so upset about this? Can you, can you venture a guess as to what you think the issue is?
Frankly, I'm not sure how that question is relevant to my testimony.
Well, it's simple. You've made a declaration that you believe the public benefit outweighs the public detriment. And what I'm asking is, on what basis do you make that assumption for the public? And I don't, I've heard your testimony. I believe it's largely missing the forest for the trees, somewhat a case of tunnel vision. But I'd like to hear more about, from a holistic perspective. I mean, okay, so let's take one example. Are you aware of the historic, the history of the three Victorians? Their human history, their cultural history, their academic history, their place as the oldest buildings on the street, who's lived there? Has that factored into your testimony at all?
Yes.
It has. Okay, can you tell me some of the people who've lived there over the years? Can you name some of the names of the famous scholars? The luminaries, the giants in their fields? Can you name some of them?
No.
Okay. So did those buildings have any significance to you outside of just being old buildings? I mean, do they, do they have any merit on their own? Do they stand? Are they, I mean, in my earlier testimony, I repeated what the university testified, I believe, earlier in the summer, that those three Victorians are considered part of the visual and institutional history of Prospect Avenue. And this has been repeated not just by the university, but also, of course, by the town. The town believes this as well, as evidenced by the, you know, inclusion, yes. So what I'm asking, Mr. Hughes, thank you, Mr. DeGrazia. What I'm asking, Mr. Hughes, is, do you believe there is any merit in, in that history, in that visual and institutional and cultural history of Prospect Avenue? Or are they disposable, are they disposable throwaway buildings? The HPC.
Mr. Bash, let, let Mr. Hughes answer your question. Okay? And then you can ask a follow-up.
Sure, thank you. So again, we have a historic preservation expert who's provided her opinion on these issues. I'm relying upon her opinion in many ways in my testimony. I do not do, nor am I qualified to do my own independent analysis of the historic significance of any of these structures. What I do know is that none of them are currently located within or eligible or state, national, or local historic district. They've never been determined to be individually significant such that they could be listed or eligible as individual landmarks. So those are the facts that I'm dealing with, along with the testimony, I would say, opinion of Ms. Bizdak as it relates to the, the four structures that are part of this application.
Okay. So essentially, what you're saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that you're viewing this in a vacuum, the vacuum being specifically related to your expertise in determining the Ps and Qs of planning variance, planning board variance requests, and, you know, bean counting essentially. Is that essentially what you're, what you're testifying, that in your expertise, strictly as it relates to planning matters, not looking at the larger community benefits or detriments as a whole, but strictly as it relates to the, the dotted line of the, the, the words in the requests and the words, and that's, that's basically your testimony?
No, you're wrong. I think the first question you asked me was, did I look at this holistically?
Yes.
And my answer was yes. I looked at this in terms of all the, the, a number of different aspects, historic preservation, impervious coverage, sustainability, ADA access, stormwater management, a number of values at play as part of this application. So, no, I did not have a narrow focus in a vacuum on historic preservation. I did, in fact, look at the, the bigger picture and evaluate what benefits would derive from this application, because that's what I'm tasked to do as a planner, and that's what the board needs to value, evaluate in connection with this C bulk variance request for a setback that's actually going to be increased and reduced in existing nonconformity.
Right, so you're looking at the nonconformities, you're looking at the setbacks. You said you walked in the neighborhood. You spent some time in this historic neighborhood, is that correct, you said?
Yes.
Okay, and you're saying that you believe, if you can imagine, if you can envision the neighborhood as it is now and has been for decades, over a century, essentially, and how it will be, you believe the public is best served by that?
Listen, I'm just going to repeat my direct testimony, so I've already put my opinion on the record.
Okay, but if I said I was going to put some nice jewelry on your right hand, but I'm going to hit your left hand with a hammer, would you take it?
I'm not going to answer that question.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Bash, that, that's not, that's not a, a question that leads directly to this. I don't think it's a fair question.
I understand. I'm sorry, I'm a little frustrated because,
Yeah.
Yeah, because things are looked at in a very narrow scope. A microscope, a vacuum, if you will. You have to look at the larger picture. You have to look at the larger context. I mean, the reason that we're all here.
Definitely, definitely made that.
Thank you.
And do you have any other questions?
No, that's it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Kip Cherry is our last individual.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Hughes, I wondered if you could talk a little bit about what a public good is? What is, what is the public good?
In the planning context. I'm getting an acronym.
I am too.
Okay. In the planning context, I would say the public good is often intertwined with the general welfare and advancing the betterment of both the surrounding area and the community as a whole.
Okay, I would agree on the idea of general welfare, which is a very broad concept. When you did your mathematical analysis, did you take into account the loss of the historical value of the court building in moving it? Or did you, did the historic preservation expert advise you on that?
Well, again, I, I think as it relates to that particular building, the issue is very simple. If the variance is approved, it's preserved. If it's not, its future is very much uncertain.
Well, that, that's not the issue. I hope that your historic preservation person will be a little sharper because we are told by national standards that once the building is moved, it loses some of its historical value because it's no longer in the location where it was, where history was created. But you didn't take that into consideration, right?
Again, relying upon the expertise of our historic preservation consultant.
Now, one thing you mentioned was that there would be a number of. Now, one thing you mentioned was that there would be a number of green improvements to the Court Building across the street, that are HVAC and all this sort of thing. Are you suggesting that that would never happen any other place? That only if it was moved across the street would the university be making those improvements?
Again, I'm dealing with the application at hand, which is to move this building, but to upgrade it, and not only upgrade the building, but result in a number of other improvements to the property as a whole. And if that doesn't happen, the record reflects that the future of that building again is at risk.
Well, I mean, maybe that's what you take into consideration, but the planning board has a broad mandate to look at the public good. So they're looking at these issues even if you're not, I would say. Have you discussed with your planning expert, your historic preservation expert, how this would affect the potential for an historic district to move the Court Building from where it is and tear down the three other buildings?
I think her testimony speaks for itself.
So you didn't take that into consideration in your numerical assessment?
Well, I'm not sure what numerical assessment you're referring to, but what I said was that the university would certainly support and would be willing to petition the State Historic Preservation Office to expand that district. And I recognize the fact that Ms. Bizdak's testimony was that, yes, there is some uncertainty as to whether the State Historic Preservation Office would consider expanding the district. But again, her testimony speaks for itself.
Right. Well, I mean, you know, we all know that willing is not the same thing as an agreement to do. And we also know that the historic preservation review folks may have a different opinion about the validity of the historic district because of the changes. And I would hope that your historic preservation professional would have advised you about that, because you came out and said, in the end, the benefits are better than the losses, than the detriments. So you did a mathematical calculation that way.
What I know is that 91 Prospect, if it's relocated, setting aside whether or not it's located in a state or national registered historic district, the building will be preserved. And if the variance isn't approved, it may not be.
Again, the planning board has a much broader idea, I think, of the greater good or the public good than maybe you do. So, I mean, they're free to.
I object to that.
And finally, as you know, the master plan recommends an historic district and so this would change the opportunity for the master plan to be implemented. Is that something that should be considered as a detriment?
Well, I did a very extensive analysis of my opinion as it relates to furtherment or consistency with the master plan. My conclusion is that there would not be a substantial impairment to the master plan if this variance is granted.
In your historic preservation professional concurred in that?
Well, I think that's probably a little outside the realms of her expertise, but that's my opinion as a professional planner, taking into consideration her testimony and her analysis.
Well, do you think that the conditions that are being so-called improved are major improvements?
I think there are substantial improvements to this property, yes. And again, it's above and beyond just the preservation of the building. It's everything I articulated in my direct testimony.
Right. And again, in your opinion, they outweigh all the detriments because you haven't taken into account a lot of the detriments. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
Okay. Well, I think that's all I have right now. Thank you very much.
There are two members of the public with their hands raised. We have Carl Pettit and Mimi. I just moved Carl over.
Okay. Mr. Pettit, are you with us? Still can't hear you. That's very frustrating. I'm really sorry. I'm pretty sure the problem is not on our end.
Okay, I'm moving Mimi over.
Okay. Mr. Muller, since Mimi is asking questions, do we need to swear her in or?
I think we should swear her in because frequently find when questions are asked, there's some points of contention that are raised. So it becomes more substantive. If you could raise, ma'am, if you could raise your right hand. You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or affirmed. Please state your full name and spell your last name.
Mary Mead Hagen, M-E-A-D hyphen H-A-G-E-N.
Thank you. Okay.
Go right ahead with your, with your questions, Ms. Mead Hagen.
Yes, I just, I had a question. It's my understanding that Princeton intends to be exemplar of green design. And one of the main tenets of green design, to my understanding, is cultivating a strong sense of place. And yet, I think a strong sense of place is not cultivated by allowing three Victorians that are buildings under the university care and supervision, let go to rack and ruin intentionally. And I might ask this gentleman that was speaking as he was brought up the green actions by Princeton University, if he felt that this was contributing to their green efforts.
Well, I did provide a number of reasons why this particular application advances the green building and sustainability element. If your question is more related to sense of place and the streetscape, I also testified to the fact that, in my opinion, preserving 91 Prospect, relocating it, but still keeping it within the Prospect streetscape, is certainly a benefit.
But I guess I would, I would ask that letting three Victorian buildings go to rack and ruin and then moving another building to their place does not seem in the green, in their methodology or their values. It doesn't seem to coincide with my understanding of green building.
Again, all I would say is, you know, the test here is really whether this variance, which is a reduction in existing nonconformity, results in benefits that substantially outweigh any detriments. And the benefits here go beyond the discussion we just had about relocating the building. There's a number of other benefits to this property, to the public good, which again substantially outweigh the detriments. And as you heard from Ms. Bizdak, this 91 Prospect Building is, in her opinion, the most significant in terms of its architectural integrity, its history, and other factors that she considers, that the State Historic Preservation Office considers in the historic preservation context. So certainly saving that building is of relevance in terms of benefits to the public good.
Yeah, I wouldn't think it's as beneficial to let three buildings degrade just to be able to move one building over. But that's my question. So thank you for your response.
Thank you. I do not see any additional hands raised for questions of Mr. Hughes. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kaufman, Professor Kaufman, I believe, has raised his hand. Could you bring him over, Carrie?
Certainly.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Your questions for Mr. Hughes?
Yes, if I may, you've been sworn in?
Previously.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
It's a question, but I think anyone, Mr. Degrassia or Mr. McCoy, could also answer this. Because I wonder, are you all aware of actually what Ms. Bizdak presented? Because as a matter of record, and I think you could look this up, she was unaware of who had inhabited the buildings at 110, 1, and, what is it, 110, 112, 116, including me? And she was unaware of the historical importance of what had been done there. And I do not believe that I was ever given an answer regarding the historical importance, which I think any person who's concerned with architectural preservation would do. And anyone who had studied architectural history, that is to say, or cultural history, as I believe you all had to do when you were in architecture school as a part of your architecture planning and certainly in architectural heritage and preservation. And I'm speaking as someone who teaches in this field, as teaches architectural historians, in part, is part of my job, that the importance particularly of one of these buildings, I would have regarded as being quite significant. And I posed the question, which was a rhetorical question. I realized for Mr. Degrassia that this is not germane absolutely to the, to the request for variance. But certainly anyone claiming that there's historical benefit or that there's not historical destruction going on here, something that I believe that the university would be very much concerned with. My question, which was a rhetorical question, was considering that this is a project which involves the sciences, I was asking about the cultural significance of this and the historical significance of this as well, for the humanities. And if, if, if a building, that is to say, if the university owned as the institute has connections with the Einstein House and it proposed that it would tear down or alter that, and I realize that it's in the Mercer Hill Historic Area, among other things, if, what you would all think about that? It's a rhetorical question, but I think that needs to be addressed here for the planning board again to hear that. And I also think it needs to be brought home that this building was where, that is to say, Panofsky lived, Erwin Panofsky, and that it is also facing the destruction of these buildings. It's not only effacing the historical significance of that space. And it was asked by Mr. McCoy, well, you know, you can go anyplace in Princeton, there are famous people who've lived there, but not where there were important books written as well. And also Strunk lived in one of these buildings, as did Froome Zeitlin, to whom the university gave an honorary degree, plus all the other people who've lived in these structures. And I just, I find it really remarkable that people have not addressed these issues and still do not address these issues. And it disturbs me frankly. I mean, I understand that you're all doing the best that you can for the university. I have no question for that, within the brief that you have. But I wonder why it is necessary, and again, I've heard the repeated arguments made by Mr. Hughes, and I suppose Mr. McCoy will also speak. I don't want to anticipate what they'll have to say. I respect your opinions about this as experts in this material. But why these were not considerations that are taken into account? And it seems to me, from the previous, from the previous testimonies which were made in previous meetings before the various, the Historic Planning Commission and other groups, that Ms. Bizdak, who is a stated expert to whom Mr. Hughes has referred, and that's why I'm intervening here, because everyone's backing off behind her basically uninformed position. She had not looked into this. She had not done.
I'm objecting to this.
I'm sorry.
I think that, I think there was a question there, which is why?
The question is, why have we not considered this?
Professor Kaufman?
Why?
Professor Kaufman? Okay, right. Yeah, that's what you were asking.
That's what I was asking.
Why was it not considered? Good, thank you.
And I think the testimony.
So, Mr. Hughes, can you speak to the issue of, from a planning perspective, picking up a historic structure with a lot of value up off of its lot and moving in across the street, making necessary the erasure of three additional historically significant properties in, you know, with a, with a rich and important set of historic qualities themselves? Can you speak to sort of that?
And I, Madam Chair, I don't know if I would necessarily describe them that way. And all of those buildings were also moved there.
Yeah, yes. All of those buildings were moved there. Yes, I'm not disputing that. I'm asking Mr. Hughes to speak to, you know, the the question of, of arguably saving, although devaluing, according to experts, one historic structure at the cost of three others.
So I think first of all, in my opinion, that's a, that's one, I'll say that's one sort of value that's, that's, you know, at play in terms of this application, this project. I think it's a somewhat narrow lens to view it. But I would also say that based on what we know now, the facts on the ground are that those three buildings are not located in any local or state or national registered historic district. There is an existing historic district that runs along Prospect that when that was originally delineated, did not include those three structures. Again, you know, we have a historic preservation consultant who's done the analysis. And her opinion is that 91 is the one with the most value and architectural integrity. And then again, I think the board needs to also just keep in mind the many other benefits that would derive from this application, including the fact that, at the end of the day, you're reducing an existing nonconforming condition, which in the planning realm, you know, look, I defer to legal counsel, but typically, that's all you need to establish to support a justification for a variance for, as it relates to an existing nonconforming condition. So I hope that's helpful, but I just think focusing on one specific issue is, doesn't do this application justice. And it's really not in the spirit of looking at this from a C2 criteria standpoint.
Okay. So I see no, nor more hands raised.
Eric, could I have one more quick question for Mr. Hughes before we go?
Yes, you may. And then we're going to hear from Mr. McCoy.
Mr. Hughes, are you familiar with the letter from Mr. Degrassi on behalf of the university dated June 15th, 2021?
I believe I've repeated that.
On page one, the last sentence of the first paragraph, it states, and I'm reading this from the letter, "If the applicant is unable to relocate, the applicant being the university, is unable to relocate 91 Prospect Avenue building, it will be demolished along with other structures that conflict with the proposed SEAS development." You said earlier that it may be demolished. Could you clarify whether this letter is correct and it will in fact be demolished if the variance isn't granted to allow it to be moved across the street? Or what did you mean by it may be demolished?
Well, I think the record speaks for itself. I mean, that's a statement from the applicant's legal counsel. It speaks for itself.
Okay, thank you.
So the answer is when you said may, you really retract that and you just deferred that letter, correct?
Yes, unless the university wants to retract that, but that's, that's what's on the record, is that the university has established that. And I have no reason to question that at this point.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Jerry.
Mr. McCoy?
Good evening.
Good evening.
You've been sworn in and you've been qualified.
Right. So I'm sorry to, yes, I appreciate that. And I, I have about six or seven minutes of a statement that is a, is a response to public comments that have been made. And then, and then I'd like to, with permission of the board, present the three animations that we submitted. They run about four and a half minutes. So let me just jump in and we'll get going. So it's been, and just to remind us, it's been 15 weeks since our initial presentation. And it's been 11 weeks since our second presentation on July 8th. In my comments tonight, I want to address some of the public. In my comments tonight, I want to address some of the public comments and summarize some of the key issues related to the application. As it has been said, since we last met, the university has continued to meet and have discussions with the Princeton Prospect Foundation, Graduate Inter Club Council, and members of the planning board staff. At the end of my comments here, I'll provide a brief update on the status of those conversations. We've also developed helpful computer animations that I just referred to. They're not new information, but they provide a better visualization of the project and provide, I think, a sense of response to some of the public comments, particularly related to the quality of Prospect Avenue that would result from the from the project. And as I said, I'd like to show those at the end of these comments. During the previous two planning board meetings, the public discussion and tonight has been focused on issues related to stewardship of historic buildings. We've pointed out how in the last, just the last twenty years alone, the university has restored, renovated and reused over eighty historic buildings and landscapes. We embrace responsibilities and challenges of being exceptionally strong stewards of our historic resources. But historic preservation is also about managing change. Change is allowed to happen in a context of preservation. Successful and beautiful towns, cities and campuses have managed to work through change in a partnership between creative civic-minded individuals, organized community groups, institutions, and developers working in balance with zoning regulations and historic districts. The site of ninety-one Prospect is a necessary part of a larger development for the university's environmental studies and School of Engineering Sciences project, also known as ES and Cs, which will serve the university's mission by providing state-of-the-art teaching, research and collaboration. The project creates facilities for seven academic departments, institutes and centers, including the Departments of Ecology and Evolutionary Biology, Geosciences, Chemical and Biological Engineering, the High Meadows Environmental Institute, the Princeton Bioengineering Initiative and the University Library. A future but separate project to be located on the site will serve the Department of Electrical and Computer Engineering. So the site is trying to accommodate all of that capacity. The proposed ES and Cs neighborhood will foster innovation and will enable breakthrough research and development of technologies that will contribute to our state's economic prosperity and will transform human health and society in ways that would have seemed unimaginable even a generation ago. For example, we will enable research addressing climate change and carbon sequestration, new pharmaceuticals for vaccines, better processes for production of new materials, greater energy efficiency. In addition, the new development will further environmental science studies that are crucial to learning about the mitigating global challenges related to biodiversity, conservation, climate, energy and environmental policy. In order to accommodate the ES and Cs project, the university has proposed to relocate ninety-one Prospect. This, you all know this, to the site of one ten, one sixteen Prospect, and it does result in the demolition of the latter buildings. The buildings at ninety-one Prospect and the one ten to one sixteen Prospect Avenue are not on any locally designated historic district. They're not within, but they are within the a state and national historic district. However, it means that none of the buildings are.
Just to be clear, that was ninety-one is not those other.
Ninety-one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. None of these buildings are individually designated on a state or national register, and none of them has a determination of eligibility. These are facts that have been acknowledged by the Historic Preservation Commission and by the planning board. As Christopher just corrected me, ninety-one Prospect is located within a state and national historic district, identified as the Princeton Historic District. This is a broad district that stretches over one point four miles long, along the length of Nassau Street, Stockton Street, Mercer Street, and incorporates a swath of two hundred and twenty-five acres. According to the nominating description of that district, it contains several hundred sites representing a panorama of American architectural styles, including contemporary architecture. The nominating form for the district includes an inventory of exemplary contributing buildings, including fourteen owned by the university and one of the eating clubs cottage club. Due to the fact that this is a privately funded project, the ninety-one Prospect application, as well as the Cs and ES application, is not subject to federal historic review. Testimony has been given asserting that the project is in violation of the Secretary of Interior guidelines. Notwithstanding the fact that the guidelines do not apply, the statement itself is incorrect. The standards are not black and white rules. They are written to provide guidance and therefore open to thoughtful and contextual specific interpretation. The guidelines have been used across the country to relocate specific buildings and to permit contemporary buildings in historic contexts. In fact, the guidelines specifically require that new buildings be distinct and differentiated from the historically designated buildings that surround them. Testimony has also been provided that asserting that the university could move the building, the Theresis Building, to the eastern side of the site in the location of what we call the north-south connector. It's important to note that this road is an integral part of vehicular circulation as part of the master plan for the East Campus, one that has been developed out of respect for the concerns expressed over many years of collaboration with the neighbors on the eastern edge of the university campus. The connector is specifically designed to minimize university traffic from spilling out into the neighborhood. It's not possible to locate Theresis Building to the eastern part of the site without having the consequence of adding vehicular circulation back into the neighborhood. Regarding the variants, the variants, with the exception of the one variance for the proposed setback of ninety-one Prospect from the university-owned departments at the corner of Prospect Avenue, all aspects of the university's proposal are in compliance with the municipal zoning regulations. The university seeking variance to the E three zone, permitting ninety-one to be located within the two hundred and fifty-foot setback from the neighboring district. There has been some opposition to the variance request based on the assertion that the variance would create a public harm, namely, it would it would result in the demolition of the three houses at one ten to one sixteen Prospect. It's important to understand that the E three ordinance was not intended and should not be interpreted as a regulation to support historic preservation. The E three ordinance permits the university to demolish the existing homes and replace them with a use that's permitted under the ordinance, which includes either a park or a parking lot. Clearly, such an ordinance written that way is not written to support goals of historic preservation. Now, we had a lot of conversation a few minutes ago about what was the intent of that ordinance. We have records of the correspondence from two thousand and five between Bob Durkey of the university and the community neighborhood, and it was all about the neighbors on Murray Place. The fact that one ten to one sixteen are captured within the ordinance, I think, is a fact of the is a resultant of the fact that the boundary between the houses on Murray Place, which are in our district, and the university continues all the way to Prospect. So I think it was an accident that those three houses are included in that setback. They were intended, the setback was intended in all of the meeting minutes, all of the correspondence between the university and the neighbors. The ordinance was intended to protect the backyards of the Murray Place neighbors from expansion of the university. The, and until recently, the university has used the house at one sixteen Prospect as an academic office space. And the use of ninety-one Prospect would be exactly the same, providing administrative office space. Because the existing houses at one sixteen Prospect is approximately eleven feet from the residential zone, it does not conform with the existing requirements of the E three, and it is permitted because of the grandfathered condition. The relocation ninety-one Prospect would be a hundred and five feet from the residential zone, thereby significantly reducing the existing nonconforming condition. Since nineteen eighty-five, the town of Princeton has amended the zoning code to create fifteen locally designated historic sites and districts. Additionally, under a heading of, in the master plan of suggested historic sites and districts, the master plan identifies fifty-seven sites and districts that, quote, should be evaluated for nomination on the New Jersey and National Registers. And based on the results of those evaluations, quote, designations as local historic sites, districts or buffer districts should be considered, end quotes. The university supports the values expressed in this carefully considered language of the community master plan. Individual property owners, however, in any one of those fifty-seven suggested sites are entitled to enjoy all of the property rights permitted by the current zoning code. New historic preservation restrictions cannot be proposed and imposed without following a deliberate extensive process required by the municipal land use law. As we know, there had been efforts on and off over the past twenty-six years to create a local district on portions of Prospect Avenue. That original effort was not supported by the eating clubs. The university is encouraged by the recent conversations with the Historic Preservation Commission to consider the idea of a local Prospect Avenue historic district. We believe that a well-defined district and a boundary would support the stewardship goals of the master plan, the private property owners within the district and the university. We have not seen the final outcome of that of that proposed district. We reserve judgment on that. But at this point, we were very encouraged by the conversations that have been initiated at Historic Preservation Commission. So just to conclude, as I said, the ES and Cs project is a once-in-an-institutional lifetime project. We carefully design all of our projects in compliance with all applicable regulatory requirements and neighborhood concerns. We have all agreed that there's no authority for historic review for the application to move ninety-one Prospect to the north side of the street. We use the Secretary of Interior guidelines voluntarily in a process of thoughtful judgment and consideration of the unique conditions of each of our projects that we undertake. And this just reminds us all one more time, this project is about saving ninety-one Prospect. Now, let me give you a little update on the conversations that we've been having with the Princeton Prospect Foundation, the Graduate Inter Club Council and municipal staff. In these discussions, we've explained in detail what I've explained to you a little bit here tonight, why there is no open space on the site to relocate the Theresis Pavilion. We've also explained the importance of maintaining the north-south connector as a benefit to the neighbors on the east side of the campus. But we've also explored ideas that have been proposed. For example, that the request of the staff would export options that could keep ninety-one Prospect in its place. And I actually moved ninety-one, we moved, keep ninety-one Prospect on the south side of the street, moving it slightly to the east of the Theresis Pavilion, diverting the north-south connector. Unfortunately, that would result in the demolition of a historic Broadmead Home at one fifteen Prospect, which is currently occupied by the head of college house. That's not a viable option for a number of important reasons. Carl Pettit and Sandy and Cliff did meet with Kristen and me just before I took off on vacation. I came back early this week and we have not had a chance to get back to them. Before I left, we asked our professionals to look at their plans. We've reviewed them carefully and we believe they just do not work. With all due respect, I have to say that 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 the people who are proposing plans that they are convinced will work do not know our requirements and they simply cannot do that. They cannot assert they know how to make a building that we need to make to recruit the best faculty in the world. However, in this process, we've also looked at very carefully at the logistics of moving ninety-one Prospect across the street, specifically to see if we could save the project at the house at one sixteen Prospect. And we've determined that the building at one sixteen Prospect can be saved and be rehabilitated. We believe this is a meaningful opportunity. It's very much in the spirit of compromise. It shows that we're listening and continuing to look for solutions. And it provides the opportunity that we could save at least two of the four buildings related to this application. And if the board were to approve the application to relocate and save ninety-one Prospect, we would agree as a condition of the approval to retain and rehabilitate one sixteen Prospect. So that concludes my comments. I defer to you if if you would like me to go into the animation now, or if you'd like to have comments or questions on what I just talked about.
Is one sixteen Prospect the one that's already, that's the eleven-foot setback? I'm sorry, I don't know which.
Yes, and it is, it is. That's.
The one further this to the right.
Yes, yeah, yes, yes.
Are there questions for Mr. McCoy before Mr. Mr. Laplace, Michael?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. McCoy and and other representatives of the university for graciously meeting us over the span of time since the last hearing. It was a concern of many of us not to waste this time, but to keep the dialogue going. And hopefully to, you know, meaningfully consider creative solutions where everybody is heard and we understand each other's point of view. So I want to thank the university and Ron in particular for allowing that to happen. One thing I wanted to ask, I'm still puzzled, and and Ron, you know, you were very gracious in talking about what the needs are of the university. And then we also met with Vice President Wang, and he was really terrific in explaining, you know, some of the parts that you've mentioned this evening of of this plan that are just seem so important to the university, like the north-south access road. It just, it seems from your perspective, that thing can just not change. It can't shift. It can't be anywhere else. I mean, that was sort of the takeaway I got from the conversations. And then the other thing was that I've been told several times by you and others that the folks that are in ninety-one Prospect now, the Court Club, like being in it. So that that's sort of a nonstarter too, that that's sort of one of the reasons why the Court Club can't be used for anything else. And and I keep coming back to this question I have, and I think I posed it to you when we met before your vacation. You've got an empty lot between ninety-one and one fifteen Prospect Avenue. You guys, I guess there was a building there that the university took down years ago. Why can't the Theresis Pavilion simply go there? It's right next to where the Court Club is. And all you could do is you could even have the access road possibly be between the Theresis Pavilion and one fifteen. It could be on either side of one fifteen. I I just don't understand with all of Princeton's vast resources and creativity and being the top university in the world, as we all read this week. How is this such an insurmountable? I mean, it seems to me like that would be a win-win. No buildings have to be demolished. Nothing has to be moved, and you get that Theresis Pavilion right on Prospect Avenue. And I apologize if I didn't understand it the first time you responded, but could you talk about that? I mean, and I might, I was going to say, if I could share the screen, I have a map handy of the of the university of the campus. Maybe that would be sort of helpful there. Can everyone see that? It's 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 a portion of.
Yep, yeah.
It's a portion of the campus map, and it shows what I'm talking about is here's ninety-one Court, the Court Club, ninety-one Prospect, an existing driveway. And then see this green area is where a building used to be, and then here is one fifteen. And I'm just puzzled why this this all-important access road couldn't be here or here, and the Theresis Pavilion could be here. And and then everybody wins. I I'm sorry. I just need to understand that better.
And no, Michael, Michael, let's mark that as exhibit PB one.
Yeah.
And again, just just a second, Christopher. How would you describe that again, Michael?
It's an excerpt of the official campus map, the map taken from the university's website.
Okay, thank you.
And just so everybody has their bearings, this is not, this is the Court Club, if you can see Mike first there. Ninety-one, one fifteen is the house that Ron was just talking about. And then across the street are the three houses, one, one ten through one sixteen.
What exhibit number is that, please?
That would be PB one.
Thank you.
Yeah, unfortunately, this does not show all the structures. The structures along Fitz Randolph, the garages, the infrastructure around the houses. I don't know if we have anything else we could pull up. I'll ask Ron, maybe even just the Google Maps. But the the reality is when our team looked at it, and Ron, I can let you answer this, but it was just, it wouldn't fit into that location. There just wasn't enough.
Chris, I I directed that question to Mr. McCoy.
Yeah, but we.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm I'm gonna give the same answer. We it we've we've tested it and it doesn't fit with the setbacks that are required to make to make the the, you know, to provide buffers and landscape buffers and zoning setbacks between ninety-one does not have enough room for the Theresis Pavilion in that location. It just doesn't work, doesn't fit. It looks like it does, but it doesn't.
Well, I appreciate you repeating that answer. I I have to confess, I still don't understand that. I I I don't understand why the Theresis Pavilion couldn't be redesigned in terms of a different footprint or whatever, but thank you for, thank you for addressing that.
Madam Chair, if if I could call your attention to the clock and ask what the what the short-term plan is, and I know Mr. McCoy had a slideshow that he wanted to show us, and when we will resume, I'm assuming that just a visual of my colleagues, I I don't think there's I don't sense a lot of sentiment for going much past eleven.
And are we able to close the public portion at this time or not?
Uh, yes.
Well, no, well, if Mr. McCoy's given us new information, then I I would ask Jerry whether that doesn't sort of open open us up for. open us up for more questioning of Mr. McCoy.
Fair enough, yes.
It does. And, and just one other thing, there's another item on the agenda, which is ESCs. We'll have to open that hearing and just carry it to a date certain, so the university doesn't have to re-notice. That's a one or two-minute exercise, but we have to do that. Louise, was that not clear?
No, that is clear. Yep.
Okay.
So if I could suggest, Louise, and, and again, deferring to you as the chair, that we allow Mr. McCoy, I think he said that his, the second part of his presentation was in the five-minute range. And then, thank you, Ron, and that we allow that to go on and then resume with board questions and possible public questions at a new, on a new date.
Ms. Sax?
And I would just like to say that if Mr. McCoy would like us to fully absorb the presentation that he's planning, he might want to choose to open with that at our next hearing. But that's up to him.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I think that.
Given that, I think that makes sense.
I do too. And I, I had dearly, dearly hoped to get a little further tonight, but I also, you know, think that everything that we saw and heard was important. And I am sorry that we had some, some lag time there in the middle, but in the grand scheme of things, I don't think it made, you know, the difference. I believe that the next, just to settle on a next meeting date, the next time we have, the next meeting we have any, any time on the agenda is October 21st. Every agenda between now and then, and we are meeting every single week. We have two special meetings between now and then, so I think we're talking October 21st.
I had already discussed that with Mr. De Grazia, that the 21st would be set aside for this, these projects if need be.
Yeah, so, um, so let me find my agenda. Jerry, just so that I'm doing exactly the right thing, I introduce, with the understanding that we're going to continue this until the 21st, I introduce the next item on the agenda so that we can carry it. And we carry both of them at the same time.
Yeah, so, so you would just announce, we're opening the hearing on, on ESCs. And, and we are going to carry it until the 21st, till the 21st of October.
The trustees of Princeton University, this is preliminary and final major site plan for environmental sciences in the School of Engineering and Applied Sciences or Science ESCs. Ivy Lane and Prospect Avenue, block 49.01, lot 5, and block 50.01, lot 18, file number P2020872P. We are carrying that to the October 21st meeting, 2021. Meeting starts at 7 o'clock. The agenda will be these two applications again. I hope and expect we will conclude one way or the other with, with the 91 Prospect, and we'll open that meeting after, you know, any minimal administrative business with Mr. McCoy's animation and presentation.
Right. And just so the public knows, there will not be any further notice of, of the two hearings now set for the 21st of October.
And, and just to clarify, so that's the 91 application that we heard tonight's being carried, the ES and Cs application's being carried, there's no further notice. Their agenda is going to be posted and the link to participate, it will be on the agenda on the website, and you said the start time is 7 o'clock?
7:00 PM, yes, from here on out.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I, I want to thank everybody again for your attention and patience. And that goes for, of course, all members of the public as well. And.
I will move to a adjournment.
A lot of you again next week. Yes, it's Mr. Cohen's absence. We need a motion.
So moved.
Which, Mr. Quinn just moved, two seconds. I myself am seconding that motion.
I think everybody fell asleep.
Yeah. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Well done, Madam Chair, tonight.
Thank you, Louise.
Thanks very much. See you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.